Morning, ladies and gentlemen, council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council. There are no additions, but there are replacement reports. Replacement report number seven point two and replacement report nine point five point one are included in your post-meeting agenda package.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other additions to the agenda? Yes, councillor? Swagert? Yep, just looking for your mic here.
Mr. Reeve, we could just discuss it later during, at the end, but I wanted to have a little bit of discussion about the oil, oil and gas drilling up at Crane Lake, and so it's kind of affecting a lot of folks up there and just kind of a bit of a discussion about it. I've reached out to our MLA and a bunch of the folks and stuff, so.
All right, thank you. Where would we put that? Susan? Or Stephanie?
We can add as nine five two.
Sorry, come again?
Nine point five point two.
Nine point five point two, thank you. Any other? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to adopt the amended agenda. Councillor Swagert? I'll call for the vote. All right, that's carried. Thank you. I'm looking for the adoption of the Minister's regular meeting of council, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Councillor Crick?
Yeah, they look good to me. I'll move to adopt them.
Thank you, councillor Crick. Any, sorry, disappeared on me here. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Onto number seven, seven point one, development application number two zero two five D zero zero one.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty-five dash D dash zero zero one for Devon and Chancay de Tartre. The applicant is applying for a variance to section forty-nine, keeping of animals from two livestock to three horses. The property is located south of Furby multi-lot subdivision on the southwest shore of Moose Lake. Adjacent properties are residential lots and quarter section remnants and an environmental reserve. Administration was made aware of excessive animals on this lot. A letter was sent to the landowners for compliance, and an application was submitted for a variance to keep an additional horse on the lot. As per section forty-nine of the land use by law, on parcels three point zero acres to ten acres, a maximum of two livestock are allowed. With section forty-nine point five allowing more, if, in the opinion of the development authority, the site is suitable for such, and it is determined that additional numbers would not create a nuisance for neighboring properties. The applicant submitted a care and management plan for the three horses, which are used for rodeo and 4H. The horses are in a fenced paddock on their lot in the winter and moved to paddocks on the adjacent lots in the summer as needed. There is a ten by sixteen shelter and evergreen trees for shelter for the horses. The horses are free fed from round bales with daily buckets of supplements. The water is from a well into heated buckets. Manure and old feed is collected and transported to a local farmer's field for spreading. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and we received a letter of concern. The concerns are in regard to the excessive, or the existing order and the appearance of the corrals, that this lot is just slightly larger than the three acre minimum, and the additional horse greatly intensifies the unpleasant situation. They feel their property has been devalued, and they have lost comfort and enjoyment in their property. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-five dash D dash zero zero one is refuse the request for a variance of section forty-nine, keeping of animals from two livestock to three horses, as it does not comply with section forty-nine, keeping of animals.
Thank you. Someone like to comment or make a motion? Councillor Swagert?
Yeah, it's unfortunate actually, because it looks like, have there not been any complaints, I would have not had a concern with it, I don't think, because of kind of the area there and, you know, what they've done apparently to kind of mitigate the animal, you know, the, having the animals on a smaller area. They got lots close by with friends and sort of farm areas that they can share and that sort of thing, but unfortunately, if they've got somebody complaining, I, I would have to say then we would have to kind of stick to our bylaw.
All right, thank you. Councillor Crick?
So, in reading the report on this one, it appears as though the, you can see on the screen there, I guess, to the, to the west and to the south, they're using the neighbor's land as paddocks to graze on as well. Is that correct?
Through the Reeve to councillor Crick? That is correct.
Okay. So, I don't like some kind of, I'm a little bit on the fence on this one too, because it's, our bylaw does state two, but there's already two there, so if we put it, if we allow a third, I don't think it's going to change a whole lot. And then they're using, they're really using about, I don't know how many acres those paddocks are. Do you know that information?
The size?
Like the, the south paddock and, and the west one? This, the acreage on those ones?
No, sorry, I don't know the acreages of those off the top of my head.
Because it wouldn't, it might be over ten acres anyways that they're using, which would allow them to have the third horse. So, I don't just, I'm not advocating one another, just commenting.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Swagert?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Have they actually had a third horse out there for a while now that you know of, or that we know of?
Yes, when the complaint initially came in, there were four horses on that lot. They have since sold the fourth horse and only have three on the lot.
And so, was there any complaints before they had, or have they always had four, or did they start with two? You know, and did they have any complaints with two? Do you know, that we know of? No?
The complaint came in at the time that there were four on the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Reeves Carson.
So, the part that circled there now is where the horses stay most of the time? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, and then they move them to those other two parcels from time to time to graze and whatnot?
Yes, as needed.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Swagert.
Is, is the complaint coming, you don't have to name anybody, but is it coming from residents like right adjacent?
That is correct.
Okay.
Someone like to make a motion, or? Councillor Sipchik?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see an issue with this, like, and that one extra horse and we got a lot of little acreages around in the community that they do have horses. I, I'm going to make a motion that we take number two, that we approve this application.
Okay, we'll wait for that to come up on the screen. Okay, thank you councillor Sipchik for making this motion. The council approves development permit application number two zero two five D zero one for variance to bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven, land use by law section forty-nine, keeping of animals to allow three horses on lot five, plan nine eight two three seven four zero, within northwest thirty sixty-six, west of the fourth meridian, with the following conditions, one through four before you. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Councillor Swagert?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, we, we kind of have that bylaw for a reason though, and I, I just think if the residents just directly adjacent, just south, are having a concern, I, I think it's kind of an issue. It's not really fair to them. You know, otherwise, you know, why do we have the bylaws? And, and it would be, it would be way worse, I guarantee it, if, if that whole area was built up with, with residents and, you know, there's open areas there, but you got something, somebody really close, and I just don't really feel that's fair to, fair to those folks then to, you know, to add more to the fire kind of thing. They got two horses already, you're going to put a third one. They had four there for a while, but I just, I think maybe it's just too many for a small lot, and you're just too close, so, you know, I'm not in favor of that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Reeves?
I wasn't, I don't have anything, but I don't see it being an issue either. It's, they're surrounded by agricultural around them as well, so there's been horses there forever, and I think even down where valleys are and stuff, there's always been horses there and stuff, so it's, I got no issue with it.
All right, any other discussion, gentlemen, on this? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto development number seven point two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Administration has received and is presenting development application number two zero two five dash D dash zero zero four for council consideration. The applicant is applying for a second approach for agricultural use on a ten acre parcel. The property is located northwest of Locuri at the intersection of Range Road four six three and Township six three five A. Adjacent properties are agricultural and residential parcels. Administration received the request for the second approach on January eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Approach policy three A dash zeros, or sorry, point zero zero seven does not allow for a second approach on parcels under eighty acres. The applicant, application is a request to allow the second approach to the ten acre property for agricultural purposes from Township Road six three five. Can you go one more to that aerial, please? Thank you. The east approach has a metal pipe gate post installed, and they are too narrow for the applicant to bring in hanging equipment. The applicant has stated that the proposed north approach would be built to MD specs for agricultural use, so they are able to bring in their equipment from their, on, keep it on their home property. The applicant has also stated being able to have the equipment on the home parcel would provide a more secure storage area for their, their equipment. The approach policy states that only one approach is allowed for a parcel on eighty acres, but applications for approaches beyond the maximum may be considered by the development authority. I do have Jessica here today. If you have any questions to, direct, directly to her, before I go into recommendations, did you have any questions for her?
Go ahead.
So, just look at this. So, the, the proposed approach is to, is to just be able to get to the other side of these trees? Is that?
That's correct.
Because, and then they probably own the quarter around them as well, or?
No.
They do not own this quarter, however, they do have other farmland in the area. And if you would like to ask questions to Jessica, by all means, I can have her.
I'm just curious why the, I guess, does it really matter, I suppose, but why the approach? Like, what is, why can't they come off their normal or their other approach?
Okay, so as I stated in the, the report, there are metal gate posts in on the approach to the east, and they're too narrow to allow for hanging equipment to come in there. So, rather than remove the posts that they currently have in place and the fencing they have in place, they've requested that we come in, uh, request an approach coming in from the north, so it's a wider actual agricultural.
Yeah, so I understand, but I'm just saying, like, is it just so they can bring their equipment in to park it? Is that what you're saying then?
Yes, to bring their equipment in there, and it is a bale yard as well for the off-season.
I didn't know if that little area in the, the opening was some sort of, they had to do something in there or what, but it's just to be able to get their equipment in and out?
Yes.
Councillor Swagert?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, just, I'm, I'm not sure if, we don't allow that for others. I'm just wondering, you know, remove the posts and have a wider approach, or, or remove that approach and have a new approach. I'm, I'm not sure. It just doesn't look like we need to justify two approaches though, so I, I don't quite get the logic, because if you just said it's too narrow, well, you know, just remove one of the posts or both the posts and make it wider, but. So, maybe the person there wants to describe why they can't just do that. Or, and also if they're willing to close that approach and just have another one on the north.
Well, I, I, I know the approach. I think there's a big mother steel gate there, so they probably put, been these big posts with, you know, gates that swing. So, you can't get, you know, you'd have to, you probably paid good money to put in a gate like that at some, at one time, and now you have to rip it out to make it wider, so that's probably.
Which is more?
If you want to make a motion to get, you know, Mrs. Chiquet appear to.
Well, you're here. I'll make the motion and allow you to speak.
What's that?
I'll make that motion to allow, allow them to speak.
All right, we have a motion to allow Ms. Jessica to speak here, Mrs. Jessica to speak here. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Just keep it under an hour. Good morning.
We would have to remove a lot of our spruce trees as well down our driveway. It's also not wide enough, so where we want the approach, we'd have to go through the field all the way to that corner to park our equipment. That's another issue there.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, what's the history here? Do you, did you just buy this land?
About a year and a half ago, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then you've got all this farm equipment that's parked somewhere else right now, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would like to have it in view. We live in a very high theft area.
Yeah, so I guess this question is for you though. What, what is the policy around two approaches? Why is the second approach not allowed? Like, what is the, what is the rationale behind it, I guess?
That was something that was brought forward to council at time of the creation of the policy, and it was an arbitrary parcel size that was determined that that's what they were going to allow or not allow.
Yeah, so is it just so that you don't have approaches every ten feet kind of thing, or? Like, I'm just curious if there's an actual?
So, I do believe that the intent of, of the policy to start with was so that small parcels aren't having approaches that are just fifty feet apart, or whatever that might be, for safety concerns. This application is an exception in that they're not asking for an approach on the same side of the property, or even off of the same road. They've got two separate accesses off of two separate roads for two very different, very different reasons that they, they are requesting these. Because the policy states that I can't give them a permit for it, I have to bring it forward for council for further consideration.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and so, again, I have no issue with this, especially if it means that you can park your equipment to the yard there like that. Is it just sitting in some vacant lot somewhere kind of thing right now, or?
Um, at my parents that live down the road, but.
Yeah.
So, I, I can answer that too, Darcy, a little bit. Like, years ago, you could put four ten acre parcels in a row, and if everybody could take two things, well, then you got a stretch going down the road with eight, eight approaches. It's, it's, it's kind of off the same roadway.
But at least with the policy, you, you know, they can bring it back to council and justify why you need a second approach, and so, I got an issue with this one at all.
All right, councillor Sipchik?
Yeah, so you mentioned like, not just for storage, but for your equipment, but also for probably hay you want to be able to store there too? So then, yeah, I, when I looked at it, I thought the same thing, like, what, you're going to have to knock out trees and everything? And if you're hauling hay, it can get rather dusty and all that too, so. I, I, I say this is perfect reason why we need an approach, and equipment's getting bigger all the time, and where do you can keep an eye on it?
All right, would someone like to make a motion? Councillor Sipchik?
I'll make that motion that we approve the second approach.
Okay. I'll wait for it to come up. All right, thank you councillor Sipchik for making this motion that council approves a variance from policy number three A zero zero seven, road approach policy for agriculture use section, sorry, second approach with PT of southeast thirty-three sixty-three six, west of the fourth meridian, as presented, to be constructed in accordance with the MD of mine of approach standards. Any discussion? Deputy Reeves?
I just want to say that, you know, the policy has done exactly what we asked it to do in this situation, right? I mean, amended what they were supposed to do with it, and brought to council for consideration, and, I mean, if we could justify why there's a second approach, then it makes sense, right? But if they didn't have any legitimate reason, then it would be easy to say no as well, right, so.
All right, thank you councillor Swagert.
Yeah, I just want to thanks, thank you for coming up and, and letting, you know, kind of clearing it, right, so appreciate that. I could help you.
All right, any other discussion? Do you have a qualified person to put in this?
Yes.
I got to bug your dad a bit. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Have a great rest of the day. Onto subdivision applications eight point one. Oh, yes, you may. Are you singing happy birthday to Dana?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. While we're waiting, it's Dana's birthday. How old are you? Are you sixty-four? The big seventy today? Well, I think we can give him a. You're looking good for seventy, buddy. All right, eight point one.
Thank you. Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two zero two four dash S dash zero one eight for council consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing to subdivide ten acre parcel from agricultural quarter section northwest eighteen sixty-three six, west of the fourth meridian, as shown on the map attached. Notification of the proposed subdivision was emailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, to submit concerns to be considered at the January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. Administration's recommended action is that council provides, approves subdivision file two zero two four dash S dash zero one eight to subdivide a ten acre parcel from agricultural quarter section northwest eighteen sixty-three six, west of the fourth meridian, for Tasha Turchin, on behalf of Alan Matras, as per the following conditions. Pursuant to section six fifty-five, that all approaches, culverts, and crossings be installed to the MD standards, and that there be a real property report submitted for, from an Alberta land surveyor. Number three, that all sewage disposal shall comply to the Alberta Safety Codes Act and the Province of Alberta Public Health Act, and that all taxes be paid in full.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Councillor Swagert?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, thank you councillor Swagert for making this motion. The council approved subdivision application number two zero two four S zero one eight to subdivide a ten acre parcel from agricultural quarter section northwest eighteen sixty-three six, west of the fourth meridian, for Tasha Turchin, on behalf of Alan Matras, as per the following conditions, one through four before you. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Okay, I'm seeing that. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto eight point two.
Administration has received and is presenting a request for time extension for subdivision application two zero two three dash S dash zero one eight for council consideration, wherein the applicant is requesting a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file two zero two three dash S dash zero one eight, within country residential quarter section northwest nine sixty-one six, west of the fourth meridian. Subdivision file two zero two three dash S dash zero one eight was conditionally approved on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Due to time restraints, the developer was unable to complete the required conditions and is applying for a one-year extension. Administration's recommended action is council approves the request for a one-year time extension on conditionally approved subdivision file two zero two three dash S dash zero one eight for one eight zero one four six zero Alberta Limited.
Thank you. Deputy Reeves?
So, what is it, what conditions was he not able to meet? Like, what does he have to do there?
There, there are a few different conditions that need to be met, top, top of my hat, right off the top of my head. I don't have the list with me. But there were a few different, there was a, I believe there was the ground coverage that hadn't been completed yet that needed to be covered, and a few other items that needed to be just cleared up.
What do you mean by that, ground covered?
The laying of the asphalt and the.
Oh, I see.
Thank you, councillor Crick.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the time extension.
All right, thank you councillor Crick for making this motion that council approves the request for a one-year time extension on a conditional approval of subdivision file two zero two three S zero one eight for one eight zero one four six zero Alberta Limited. Any discussion on this motion? Councillor Sipchik?
Yeah, I've got a question. Is this the first extension I, I'm applying for?
That is correct. This would be the first one-year extension. That is correct. This would be the first one-year extension.
And then for our understanding, everyone else's, I guess, um, if we didn't allow, what, what would happen then?
If you did not allow it?
Yeah.
Then it would void, it would void his application. It would therefore be deemed expired. And there has been a substantial amount of work completed within that already. And if you were to deem it void at this point, the applicant would have to reapply and go through the entire process from the beginning again, which would be quite costly for him.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Councillor Sutick, one more time?
No, no.
Oops, sorry. My fault. Pressed the wrong button. Uh, I'm gonna call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna go to nine point one point one. Notice of motion? Councillor Swiger?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, so you can recall, on January fourteenth, I brought the, uh, council, or the motion forward, um, basically to create a policy for addressing public requests to name municipal roads. And, um, we, we don't have a policy. A lot of municipalities actually do have, uh, and there's municipalities that do have named roads, and, and I'm not suggesting that we, uh, uh, change, um, you know, the way we name our roads. We've got township roads, range roads. We've got a good addressing system, and it works well for, for nine eleven, uh, you know, any type, any kind of response. But there have been, uh, in the past, and then more recently, people have asked, you know, could we have a short section of road actually, uh, named? And, and so I said, yeah, well, I'll bring it forward to council and see what kind of interests we have, so. Personally, in the MD, there are some roads that are kinda named, like, there's a, there's Y Road, there's Tower Road, there's some that have Murphy Road, um, you know, Dupree Road, different roads that are, are named, and... Uh, so people kinda know where they are, but also they have a local address and stuff, so, you know, like, Dupree Road is Range Road six twenty-two, and sometimes I call it the garbage dump road or whatever 'cause the Ardmore landfill's on it, but, anyway, there's, there's a possibility that we could, um, allow, um, somehow, you know, somebody to name a road after somebody or something historic or whatever, so... I just wanna bring that forward to have a discussion and see if there's interest at council of, of having that done.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Crick?
Yeah, a question for you. So are, are you suggesting that we would get rid of the numbers and have a name, a name instead, or, no, just be a name and the numbers?
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a name and a number at all. It would be, you'd have like a short section of a road that you'd, you'd call it whatever. We got Dupree Road already, but-
Yeah.
A short, short section of the road that somebody, you know, says, well, I'd like to have this named whatever after somebody that important or whatever. And, and so you don't, you'd put up a road sign, but you're not gonna address that, so there, nothing changes on that road. It's, it's still whatever road number and township number it is, but...
So at, at the intersection, then, it would still have the, the Range Road township signs?
Yeah, and you don't wanna confuse the, the name of the road with a, with a legal description 'cause you don't wanna have, you know, that kinda confusion. And I, I guess if you, if you're thinking about nine eleven, that kinda stuff, I, I've been on a fire department for forty years, and, and, uh, uh, people say, well, if you start doing that, people will be confused, but actually, it's, it's been a benefit, a, a lot of times where the local guys know, well, that's Tower Road. Even though it's four three four, it's still Tower Road, so if dispatch, somebody says that, uh, it actually helps, you know, a lot of the times that, that, 'cause like, guys don't remember what roads are, but they, they'll know a name. So, and I'm not suggesting the MD wants us to, you know, have hundreds of, uh, named roads, and I don't think that would happen, but it just gives that, that possibility if we ever want to do that.
Well, I think if this goes forward, then you make a policy on the rules. You know, you just can't, we don't know how it's gonna look, but it's just to go forward.
Yeah, and I, and I, that's why I say I suggest that, uh, admin take a look at what other municipalities are doing. Um, and like, like I was thinking of, kinda like St. Paul County, as you drive towards St. Paul, there's, I don't want to mention Severn Road, but that's there. There's Severn Road and a few others ro, named roads, and so they've, they've probably got a policy-
Yeah.
Um, you know, to handle it, and, and you'd have to have residents in agreement or whatever, uh, to go through with it, but...
Yeah, because you could get into the thing, is if someone wants to name a road, and then a bunch of people don't want that road being named that, well, then they, they have to have the opportunity to, you know, speak against it, right?
Yeah.
All right, uh, any other discussion? Yes, councillor Sutick?
Yeah, so this would be a cost to us, too, like, putting these signs up, and we'd have to have a good policy to make sure it doesn't get out of hand where we're naming it, putting signs on every road or major roads and renaming them. But, uh, yeah, I don't know about this one.
It's, it's a tough one, uh, but it may not be, and it doesn't even have to cost us anything. Now, if somebody wants to go to the trouble of, of, you know, bringing that forward to council and requesting it, uh, I, I recommend that they get enough of the people along that section of road also interested and, and agreeing with it, and, uh, maybe they pay for the sign. And it's just a simple road sign that they pay for. So it really would cost, it may not cost the MD anything.
Any other discussion? All right, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, uh, create a policy to address public requests to name municipal roads.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
With the notice of motion, we just need a second for the motion as well.
Okay.
That's right, or I could die now.
Would someone like to second this?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
'Cause it's his birthday.
It's his birthday, yes.
And then you can vote against it. I saved it, actually, Mr. Reeve, for my birthday.
Mm-hmm. You had that all planned out?
I did. It's been years.
All right, any, yeah, go ahead.
So I've just, I don't know if anyone knows this, but, um, so, you know, all these roads that you mentioned, I don't think any of the, that's just 'cause it's, people have been around. Those, those aren't officially titled roads, like Dupree Road and all that stuff, right?
But they actually are. Like, Dupree Road has a sign that says Dupree Road, and Y Road has a sign that says Y Road, so I'm not sure how that came about, but, yeah, some of them are.
Yeah, how did those ones come about then?
I'm, that's a good question. Like, 'cause Y Road used to be, uh, La Goff, well, and it was, it's just a range road, or it's a, sorry, it's a, yeah, it's a range road for twenty-nine or something, but, so, the, I don't know, who, who called it Y Road? But it's, there's a Y Road sign.
Yep. No?
No.
Why they call it the Y Road? Because it's Y's there?
That's funny.
Well, Y, the Y, W-Y-E.
Let's not get into, uh, mo, uh, silent motion films here.
But, Mr. Reeve, that, Mr. Reeve, that's a kinda valid question, though, because, like, who, is that an MD road sign, or is that, uh, like, it's off Highway twenty-eight?
I saw the sign. I've seen a Dupree sign. Uh, I don't know how they got there, if we put them up, or, uh, I bet you Vic could tell us why the Y Road is there.
Back to the railway days.
Yes.
Used to be, uh, elevator, slower, so that's just how we surveyed it.
Yeah, but I was, that's kinda recent, though, Vic, like, Y Road is more recent than that.
No, the Y Road's always-
I thought it was La Goff at one time. The road was even called La Goff.
It's been La Goff, but it's always called the Y Road.
But thanks for that input, yeah.
All right, any other discussion on this first motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Okay, on to nine point two.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
Administration received an application and is requesting a decision for first reading for bylaw number eighteen ninety, which would authorize the closure and sale of road plan eight seven two two six three eight located in plan one seven two one eight four eight, block two, lot two, as shown on the map on appendix A. After the consolidation of parcels that were located in the southwest of thirty-one and northeast of thirty, fifty-nine of five, into one parcel in twenty seventeen, the road plan is no longer required by the municipality. The applicant has requested to close, purchase, and consolidate the road plan into the ninety-nine point oh-nine acre parcel to allow for unhindered use of the parcel as the road plan is not required for access. If approved, the land would be sold at fair market value as obtained by the MD Assessment Service Department. A copy of the application for closure of the government road allowance was provided to Infrastructure Services, Agricultural Services, Public Safety, and the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority for review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. If bylaw number eighteen ninety is given first reading, a public hearing will be scheduled to provide opportunity for anyone claiming to be affected by the closure of the road to be heard. Following the public hearing, the bylaw would be sent to Alberta Transportation for approval before being able to proceed to second reading. This process is in accordance with section twenty-two of the Municipal Government Act. So our recommendation is that bylaw number eighteen ninety, uh, be given first reading.
Thank you. Councillor Crick?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for bringing this forward. That road goes into, right in the middle of a gentleman's property, and there's, it's just his property all the way around, all sides of the road, so it really just looks like a driveway even, and I think it makes common sense that we close and sell it, so I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you councillor Crick for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen ninety being above the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven to close and sell for far, fair market value that all portions of registered road plan eight seven two two six three eight be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Councillor Swiger?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. It was just a que, question, looking at the map. So if you show the, kinda, aerial map of that, uh, it's, it's interesting, 'cause it looks like it's kind of in, within Muriel Lake, like, sort of, it says, it says Bank of Muriel Lake, and sort of areas around that yellow at the bottom there. And so was that, was that actually, um, an MD, uh, road allowance? I mean, it's, it's not straight, it's nothing, it's just kind of a-
It was a forest road, uh, before, when this wasn't one whole parcel, so there were parcels to the east, so that was the road that accessed the parcel to the east. The current landowner has purchased all the parcels and consolidated them together, so there's no need for the, uh, road to access the east side of it.
Okay, yeah, just, it's weird when you say forest road. Normally, the, if they're forest roads, they're straight. They're like, r, along a road allowance? So it wasn't at all, right? It was just kind of a-
Correct, it was a registered road plan, yep.
Okay, well, I'm having a hard time grasping what you mean by registered road allowance, because normally road allowances have to run along, do they not have to run along provincial?
It was a forest road allowance.
Yeah, so it was, it was surveyed out road plan that was registered at land titles.
And they didn't do a very good job surveying it, did they? It's pretty crooked. Anyway, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm just trying to wrap my hand around why-
It's probably pretty hilly in there, no, in that area, or not?
It, it could be, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Was it, is it known as Forest Road, that one?
Yeah, Forest Road.
Forest Road?
All right, any other discussion? I see none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Nine point three point one.
Um, thank you, Mr. Reeve. So this report is related to, uh, bylaw number eighteen ninety-one, the amending master rates bylaw. Um, this, um, came forward, uh, and received first reading on January the fourteenth. Um, it does, pardon me, um, it does include two changes. One to, uh, the planning and development section, um, the solar photovoltaic systems fee schedule, uh, and a title name, a, a title is, uh, change associated with that, as well as the updated water and sewer rates that were included in the twenty twenty-five budget, uh, and, and approved by coun, council through that process. Does align to council strategic goal number one, building a viable and diversified regional economy. It is, um, i, in, in agreeance with Municipal Government Act, section eight point one, and, uh, there are no cost implications associated with this recommendation. So the, this bylaw, well, thank you. This bylaw, um, will be posted on the MD website. At this time, uh, administration is asking council, uh, to provide second reading, um, to, uh, bylaw number eighteen ninety-one, and if successful, uh, would move to third reading, please.
All right, thank you. Councillor Swiger? Oh, councillor Swiger? Oh, sorry. Yeah, it's coming, there you go. Too big of fingers.
I just, I, I sort of, um, thanks, Ms., uh, Acting CAO. I had to take a little bit of exception to you saying there's no cost implication, 'cause, of course, there is to the residents, so... It's, you know, fees go up and, and, but, but whatever, I'm, I just wanna do add, though, that, um, um, because I live in Ardmore, and kinda represent residents of Ardmore and, and maybe Fort Kent, but, uh, water and sewer, water and sewer service fees and waste was billed every two months, and it was a ten-dollar fee. Um, and then they went to every month, and it was still a ten-dollar fee, so they, they, I'm just making the point, they doubled the, the fee charge on that, which, which we never actually ever discussed, but... So, anyway, I'm, I'm, um, I'm not gonna go to the next step, but I'm just making the point that we probably should've, maybe had a better discussion of that at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Crick?
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote against it either. The, uh, I think this is still not a cost, that, still doesn't meet cost recovery, the fees that we're charging right now. So it's still a subsidized service, and with that, I'll make the motion for second reading.
Right, thank you councillor Crick for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen ninety-one being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend the master rates bylaw be given second reading. Any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Looking for a third?
I'll make the motion for a third.
All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Skarson, for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen ninety-one be given third reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto nine point three point two.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Um, this report is related to Corporate Services twenty twenty-four fourth quarterly report, um, and I would ask, um, Vic to come up and present the Assessment Services section.
Mr. Reeve to the council. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem.
I'm, I'm Victor Kaluk, one of the property assessors, uh, with the MD. Uh, normally Calvin Bastelko, uh, presents to council. He's on holiday, so I'm filling in. Uh, I'm here to present the Assessment Services, uh, quarter, fourth quarter report. It would be, uh, October to December twenty twenty-four. First slide here, there's, uh, comparison of the twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three property tax revenue. In twenty twenty-three, there was one million three hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars of current year levy not collected. In twenty twenty-four, there was nine hundred and thirty-five thousand and sixty-two dollars of current year not collected. That's a, uh, difference of, uh, four hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars in twenty twenty-four of less uncollected dollars. Next slide, the twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three property tax, uh, properties. In twenty twenty-three, there was one thousand and ninety-nine properties of current year levy not collected. In twenty twenty-four, there was one thousand one hundred and eighty-three properties of current year not collected. In twenty twenty-four, there was eighty-four more properties- In two thousand and twenty-four, there was eighty-four more properties unpaid than in two thousand and twenty-three. In two thousand and twenty-four, there was thirty-nine less properties levied. This is a result of internal property tax count maintenance and not thirty-nine properties that were consolidated. We have some properties that we do assess that are non-physical, these are license, permits, leases, that sometimes are activated and deactivated, depending on the lease For the property tax penalties, in two thousand and twenty-three, there was three hundred and forty-two dollars, three hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in penalties levied, and in two thousand and twenty-four, there was three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars levied. That's an increase of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars in levies. Property tax revenue, the budget, the in two thousand and twenty-four, municipal revenues collected was eighty-seven million, seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and in two thousand and twenty-four, the municipal budget was set for a collection of eighty-six million, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, excuse me, eighty-six thousand, eighty-six million, set nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. That's a variance of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, and this occurs sometimes when, once the budget's set, the assessors find reasons to increase the assessment, and they do that according to our abilities under the Municipal Government Act, and therefore, more money in this situation was collected than budgeted. Property assessments for the DIP, DIP stands for Designated Industrial Properties, there's two types, there's the linear type, that's pipelines, power lines, wells. In that case, there was no revisions applied during the assessment, our property tax year, and there was no appeals received by the provincial assessor. For the DIP nonlinear, that's the buildings and structures and machinery and equipment. When this report was made, that was January thirteenth, there was no appeals received by the provincial assessor's office. Since that time, we did receive three appeals, that was due to revisions we made during the current year. The provincial office will be dealing with the appeals, as the delegates will be helping out with that. And for the municipal side, oh, one other thing, we do have one assessor, Kelvin, who's sitting with on the Assessment Model Review Meetings as a member of the Technical Working Group, and so far, he has spent four full days attending meetings and seven to eight more days working with the committee. What they're working on is they're reviewing the reporting and determining assessment costs for some of the industrial properties, and that committee's report will be going to the minister in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five. Dealing with the property assessment on the municipal side, this is residential, the farmland, the commercial, we had no assessment appeals, and in the last quarter, we worked on the property sales, inspection of new properties, and currently are preparing the two thousand and twenty-four assessment for two thousand and twenty-five taxes. During the year, we did have three vacancies for assessors, those three positions have been filled by junior assessors now, and the new staff are being orientated and trained. This is kind of a progression where some of us assessors, including myself, are getting a little old, getting close to pension, so it's a transition period.
We're not going to let you go, Vic, sorry.
Okay, well, I might stay a little longer, we'll see. It's been good, it's been good. To deal with the municipal insurance expenses, in two thousand and twenty-three, the cost for the insurance for the entire year for the M.D. was four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, and in two thousand and twenty-four, it increased to five hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. That's about a twenty thousand dollar increase in payments, and I'm sure we've all seen our insurance increase, and it's just the cost of doing business on that. That would conclude my presentation, if you have any questions?
Counselor Crick?
Yeah, two questions.
Then Counselor Swiger.
The municipal insurance, is that regard to the assessment insurance, or is that just like our buildings and vehicles?
Our buildings and physical structures.
Okay, so that's for the whole M.D. then?
Insurance, yeah.
And I had one other question, it goes on page four. Yeah, property tax penalties levied, it's it looks like about, without doing the math, about an eight percent jump this year in penalties from over two thousand and twenty-three? Is that just kind of reflecting of people struggling financially due to...
Yes, that would be part of the rationale, reasoning for that.
Due to just inflation, possibly?
Yeah, our penalty rates have not changed, our penalty rates are usually applied in March first, that's that ten percent, and September first, and that's twelve percent, but it's just that more properties are behind on their property tax.
It's unfortunate, but and I feel bad for people that are struggling financially, because hopefully things turn around here, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Swiger.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. You were talking about the assessment reviews on page four and the industrial assessment reviews, and you said you had three appeals, and are those, do you think, going to be significant at all to the M.D. and to what extent?
Not as significant as NABE, it's around a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar amount. These three appeals are, we were directed by the provincial assessor's office, deals with the Masqua plant, where these pilot plants were receiving extra depreciation because they were considered to be experimental, that practice has ceased via the provincial government directive on that, and the appeal will probably take a year or two to be heard, but there is one other appeal very similar to this that will be heard this year, and that will probably give us guidance on what to do with our particular appeals.
Thank you.
But in terms of dollars, no, it's not as significant as the NABE by far.
All right, thank you, any other questions? Seeing none, thanks, Vic, great job. I think we're going to take a break, it's almost ten o'clock, so we're going to take a break, and then we'll reconvene.
Okay, welcome back. Before we get to this delegation, we have a special man in our presence here. It's our new CEO, Ben. I'd like him to come up and introduce him to the M.D. residents.
Mr. Reeve, are they seeing the back of the side or the front of him?
I don't know what side they're seeing of him right now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Reeve and council. I want to make it very clear, I'm excited to be back home. Wood is home, St. Paul, Bonneville, the area itself. I used to throw chain on oil rig to engineering and designing rigs itself. As a CTE and a farm boy, I can tell you, heart is right here, and this is where I am now. I have a special guest and people that want to be out there and come and meet me from industry to anybody else. Drop by, my door is always open.
All right, thank you. Welcome. We are going to the delegation from... Where are we at here? 5.1 Glendon? Come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, councilors. We want to thank you very much. By the way, my name is Ken Bishak, President of the Glendon Agricultural Society and lifetime member of Glendon and love the town and the community. Anyways, thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. We really appreciate the time you took last December, coming to our facility, touring our facility, and we hope that the experience gave you a better understanding of our goals and our vision for the future. We'd also like to express our gratitude for your ongoing financial support, including the operation grants we've received in previous years and the commitment you have just recently made for the next five years. That is amazing. This support provides us with the stability and enables us to plan for the future. I myself am very proud to be part of the Glendon Agricultural Society, an organization and facility that has served the village of Glendon, the surrounding community, the M.D. residents for over fifty years. The facility has been a place for people to gather, to celebrate, and stay active fostering community engagement and well-being. The society has thrived for over the years for two key reasons. First, it has been sustained by the dedication of our volunteers. Last year alone, over 5,000 volunteer hours were logged. Each council since its inception has worked tirelessly to maintain and improve the facility, which started as a shell and has evolved significantly. Recent upgrades include a relatively new ice plant, an insulated roof, improved exterior, and a newly insulated and re-clad arena interior. The hall has also seen major improvements with a new floor, updated sound system, wall repairs, fresh paint, and the installation of wainscoting. Through hard work and successful fundraising, we've managed to make these improvements while staying financially stable. Importantly, while the society has been the driving force, it has always been a strong partnership with both the village and the M.D., and in recent years, that partnership has even grown stronger. So we thank you. Joining me today are Mrs. Ruth Isley, our grant writer, who will provide you details in our plans for the arena, and Mr. Scott Delair, our facility manager, and most importantly, a committed Glendon community and volunteer. Ruth?
Thank you, Ken. Reeve Kalinsky, councilman, thank you for this time. The modernization of the Glendon rink is going to address many health and safety risks as well as a vision for the future. Fifty-seven thousand youth and adults go through that rink in a year. Plus, it's going to be part of a proud partnership for the 2026 Winter Games. The village of Glendon is one of the partners. This year, the rink is completely booked during the week. There isn't one hour of free ice time. Bonneville minor hockey is probably the biggest user of the group of the rink. With over four hundred kids in their organization, they overflowed into the Glendon rink. You could almost call this the Bonneville's third rink. And it's morphed into more of a rink for the higher-end hockey players. There is a hockey academy that runs out of the rink with about eighty students in it, and they are called the Lakeland Lightning. Darcy knows lots about them. We also have some of the four girls, female teams that play on that ice surface. And so we have a vision for the future because it's basically central to Cold Lake, Bonneville, El Pointe, Lac Lebiche. The double-A teams are all playing there from U-11 to U-16. The rink was built in 1971. Ken explained the envelope, upgrades that have been done, but the inside of the rink is in dire needs as you were shown that day when we invited you for Progies. I've put a little PowerPoint together for you. So this view, I wanted just to point out, the new roofing and the envelope is good to go. They put a new ice plant in in 2008, which is in this area here inside, or sorry, 2018. And the condenser sits right out here, which the condenser is giving us a lot of trouble right now. And the plan is to build onto this area. We are going to build a new Zamboni room, redo a dressing room in this area, and provide Scott, our facility manager, with a workshop which he does not have to this day. The rink is a hundred and eighty-two feet long. To accommodate higher-level teams, we have to make this rink bigger, up to a hundred and eighty-five feet, so that will be part of the plans. The major renovation that started this whole process was the header and the refrigerated slab. Scott can speak to the condition of that.
Yes, just to clarify on the length of the rink, I guess Hockey Canada do recognize it as an official playing surface. Their minimum is a hundred and eighty-five feet, so that's why we would extend to that. But yeah, basically, where this all started was the condition of the brine header that supplies the cold brine to cool the floor. It's just in dire need of repair. It's leaking quite badly. I guess, you know, we went through a couple of trips to the city to get more brine mix, and at this point, there's nothing really we can do except for send out a prayer and hopefully we get through this season. But it needs to be addressed. That in turn with the way that the cooling lines go into the slab, there's no room for error if it was tried to be repaired. There's a high chance that they would damage some of the lines. That means pinching off or isolating one of the supply and return lines, and then you get like what you call a warm spot on your floor. You know, rings can limp along with maybe one of those or two of those, but at that point, you're looking at replacing, right? It's at the end of its life expectancy, so.
Sure, quick question. So is it the plan to take the whole floor out and redo it from scratch?
Yeah, so I guess another issue is that the subfloor heating system that's typical in all new construction and typically, I guess, you know, not too far in the past, you would put it under slab heating, then insulation, then your cool floor. Ours has been out of commission for, I don't know how long. Nobody really seems to know for whatever reason. So that also presents problems where it pushes frost down into the ground and can create issues obviously with the slab and then surrounding structure as well, right? So the combination of that and then to, yeah, to replace the slab is a necessary thing to do.
And of course, the boards will be replaced also. Right now, they're solid boards, which isn't acceptable in the health and safety world. The other improvements that are going to make a big difference in this rink is the new Zamboni room and simple things like a mop sink. This arena does not have its own mop sink, so this utility room will now house a mop sink, and there'll be another mop sink at the other end of the arena with the new dressing rooms. Do you want to speak on the Zamboni room?
Yeah, so with Zamboni room, again, a lot of this work was done with volunteers over the years. Like Ken had mentioned, it started at a shell with, you know, natural ice. The way the slab was poured is about thirteen inches lower than the grade beam or the foundation around the exterior of the building. So to get up into the Zamboni room, it's actually an incline to get up there with the Zamboni. And from a functionality standpoint, it's a nightmare. Obviously, water runs downhill, so trying to get off the ice with the Zamboni when you're going uphill, it creates issues that delay the... You know, it just takes longer to flood, takes longer to clean everything up, more ice maintenance, and harder on the equipment. So by raising the floor, when we redo it, raise the floor to match the grade of the footings of the building, so we have a nice level surface to drive in there. Also, the snow pit, obviously, I guess most of you would know that when you're doing ice, you create a lot of snow. You're shaving snow off all the time. Our snow pit was designed for a Zamboni that would mount on the back of a tractor, so it would dump at the rear. So driving off the ice, you would dump the snow on the rear of the Zamboni and then drive in. Again, as far as an operational standpoint or functionality standpoint, all the new Zambonis dumped from the front. So right now, it's a little bit of a task to be able to drive, dump the snow, come off the ice, and into the Zamboni room. Typically, you would finish up your flood, back, back out, dump, and then drive off the ice. And it's, yeah, it's just, it's backwards right now. So that's out.
The dressing rooms, existing dressing rooms, we have four. One is a very small one, not even really should be called a dressing room up here, and the other two here, which both need shower maintenance and upkeep, paint, new ceiling tiles, fixtures. But one of the problems Glendon rink has faced in the past hosting tournaments is they do not have enough dressing rooms. And there was always plans to put in two more dressing rooms so they could host tournaments and bring money into the community and help the egg society. But the problem was they could never get water across this rink for a decent price without coming from the outside. So now that the actual slab is going to be tore up, they can pipe the water, and we can build these two new dressing rooms, which is part of the vision of this rink to become tournament central and host tournaments every weekend. Now we have some of the weekends booked and some of it for power skating and different instructors coming out, but we still have ice time on the weekends that can be used. And our tournaments are now starting to overlap into El Pointe. So our M.D. residents are taking their money and spending the day in El Pointe because their arena facilitates the tournament better. And there will be one more dressing room built down here as well as updating the ref room. The lobby, we would really like to see the lobby entrance change. Right now, there are four doors, two going into the hall and two going into the arena here. But this cement wall can come out, and we can make an entrance where as when somebody's packing a hockey bag in, you don't have to wait till they go by. So coming into the arena, so that is one of the options that we can do here. And looking at just opening this up, putting new glass in so spectators can see from down below and creating a mezzanine up on the top floor and redoing the washrooms downstairs. We visited Cold Lake Arena North, which they were going to demolish, and they decided to refurbish the way we are looking at doing this now. And you would, it's like walking into a brand-new rink. Anything to add to the...
Just again, just more, this would be more functionality and just offering nicer amenities to our patrons, right? The idea of a mezzanine kind of came about to just increase our floor space and, I guess, square footage for people. When you get even games back-to-back with four teams and all of their families and kids that come in, the lobby doesn't take long to get packed in there. So, you know, almost not quite doubling up our floor space, but adding, you know, just probably fifty percent more space there or capacity would be awesome advantage for us.
And when we do the dressing rooms at the northeast end, they will have to take a couple of the stands out to make the walkway here too, so we'll be losing a little bit of seating there. So just drawings of the mezzanine. So we went through the process of interviewing companies, getting estimates. We looked at all kinds of different routes to put this whole project together, and we ended up really liking the construction company called Reward Construction. It is, we still feel they're local people, they're Amietts from Malague. It's a fourth-generation company. He specializes in rinks and boards. And we engaged an architect. So these are the proposed scope of work that we have estimates for, to bring this rink back to where it needs to be so we can finish with our vision of becoming tournament central. The rink, like I said, was built in 1971, and there's many of these parts that have never been touched. So we spent the last month getting estimates from Reward, and the drawing's done. That's where we left our meeting at the arena that night. We've written the CFEP grant, and we were supposed to hear in January, and we're still waiting to hear. The village of Glendon has thrown all they could into this project. They put nine hundred thousand in. It has become a priority with the village of Glendon. The egg society has put in a hundred thousand. So at this point, we had a matching, we have applied for a million dollars matching, so we're hoping to have a couple million dollars in hand. The budget came in the same, just a couple days ago, the same day the condenser went, so we had to add another three hundred thousand dollars onto the budget for the condenser. I know we were talking about the ice plant. It was put in in 2018, and it was a half a million dollars. Now that same ice plant is 1.3 million. Cold Lake just bought an ice plant, so nothing is going down. So we urge you to really look seriously at doing this whole project for the benefit of not just the M.D., but for the egg society, for the people of the community, because we feel like the prices are just going to get worse. Now is the time with the Winter Games and how this arena is morphing into more than just a local arena that it's servicing the whole region. Are there any questions up till now?
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Reeve Skarsen.
I have a question that might seem silly, but it's actually legitimate. Is anything that you've planned here going to help with the temperature inside of the rink? Like the temperature inside?
Regarding like...
How cold it is when you're in there?
When's the last time where you were there? Yeah, I think we've solved that problem already. There's just a way to run rinks differently. It kind of comes with experience. I kind of make the joke when people come in that haven't been there for a long time and they're wearing all their winter attire, and I said, "Don't worry about it." There's, I guess, to just explain it, there's different ways you can run a small rink like that. So you've got the option of, humidity is an issue, right, for making ice? So you can either run your dehumidifier or you can run your bleacher heaters, but you don't have to run both. So what I like to do, because I can't stand listening to that dehumidifier drone on for all, they'll never turn off, I turn that off and I run the bleacher heaters from August fifteenth to, they're basically on all the time. So I don't think it ever gets lower than ten degrees in those bleachers now. So come for a skate and you'll see, it's pretty darn, it's pretty darn warm.
It's been a couple years since I've held practices there, but it was...
No, you'll be able to feel your toes after you skate now.
All right. And I'll tell you that, you know, some of the things you mentioned have been keeping, I know teams that I've been involved with out of that rink because the boards, you can't really play contact hockey in there, right? And so that was always a big issue, and even the height of the boards, they were a little too high, right? So things like that sound, you know, I'm glad to hear that those are kind of getting addressed, right?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Slupchik?
Okay, I've got a few questions. Thank you for coming, though. So if we go forward to all these things, like it should decrease our energy efficiency, astronomy... Uh so if we go forward to all these things, like it should uh decrease our energy efficiency astr- astronomy like. By a huge amount, because uh I imagine we must be paying a lot, like you said, you have to go get more brine. But that's, that's all costing us like lots of maintenance costs there.
Yeah, I um as far as like, I mean, I'm not qualified to do like an energy uh analysis, I mean, it would be uh. Pretty obvious energy savings with the with the condenser, because right now it's just leaking water out onto the ground and and also. Uh the pumps and stuff like that, where the newer uh adiabatic condensers are are air-cooled. Um so they use a lot, they're they're a lot more efficient. Um as far as um. Just a, just a standpoint of saving money, I mean, we'll be lucky to get through another season with that header, so rather, you know. Planning to spend the money rather than spending it in a crisis is probably gonna save money, I would assume uh as well, so. Uh you know, I think that's best way I can answer that.
And have you um, you, and when we did the tour there, you guys said something about the slab replacement. Where you don't, they don't think the compaction in the ground underneath will have to be dug out, but they'll do some tests and see.
Yeah, yeah, so again, um they'll never know what's underneath there until they get underneath that slab. Um but just judging by the fact that the slab hasn't actually heaved in all these years without running um under slab heating system. It's a good indicator that it was, it was prepared, the ground was prepared properly underneath it, so uh the the. This uh company that we're we're uh working with here doesn't have a major concern with what's underneath the slab. They think that there should be a solid foundation to build on.
So and also you got, you mentioned that the building was built nineteen seventy-one, what's the, what the building was built nineteen seventy-one? What's the re- uh any risk of asbestos being in there, because that will increase the cost enormously?
Yeah, I if, I think you'll see, uh if it's not on there, i- it was built in, yeah, there there is some uh money set aside for abatement. Um they, again, they they, from as far as they can see, um there shouldn't be anything major to to deal with. Um but there there is money set aside for that, so it was nothing that they batted an eyelash at, they were, they're familiar with this. They're a specialized company that this is their, this is their expertise, so this is nothing new to them, so.
Okay, and then looking at all your plans and your drawings, it looks like it'll end up being an amazing facility. Are you guys looking at increasing uh seating for the spectator seating?
That's, that's the whole idea why the mezzanine came into play, so there would be increased seating for spectators. Um if you look at, this is not to do with that, but the budget, the contingency at three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We, that was put there in case there's any frost under that slab and they have trouble and uh. Yeah, forty-four thousand for the hazmat testing and we think it just, the most could be the lead paint. They don't fe- think the cinder blocks are going to have asbestos in them, uh when we have to put in a few new doorways.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, any other questions, any other? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor, uh sorry Deputy Eve Skarsen.
So um what is it, what is the ask here then, is, I see four million, but you say you might have two million raised, is that?
Well, we hope we end up with close to two. We won't know till the government releases the C F E P grant information, which should be by Friday.
Friday?
Yeah, by Friday.
Okay, are you up against like uh other projects in the area?
Absolutely, we are, uh but we did have the privilege of touring Minister Fur when she was down and so uh. I did hear back from the grant office that the, they were very happy with the writing of the grant, it looks as positive as it can. To us, we feel like we have done everything possible to make this happen.
And then uh what are the timelines here?
Well, yeah, that that timeline is a problem, so it's nice that we just have this budget done so recently. So the prices shouldn't change too much, because by the middle of March, end of March. Reward has to be in there and start doing this renovation, because they only have a timeline from maybe March till August. And and they are aware of that, so we are ready to go, we have everything in place for them being ready to go.
So is the the slab and the boards kind of the first priority then?
Yes, and the condenser. Yeah, and well, and then the Zamboni room, the mop sinks and the dressing rooms and, yeah.
Right, go ahead, yeah. You, oh, sorry, I have Counselor Slipchuk, then Counselor Swager.
Yeah, I believe I read in the report also like there's two hundred, two hundred days they'll take them, they'll forecast it to do. So.
Yeah, they, they're used to, they are very used to this timeline.
Not much time then if we want to have it ready for next winter games, so if you're you're proposing. If you get the two million grant you're hoping for, you're pretty well asking D M D for two point three. You know, to can to go forward with this project and get it all done.
Scott can uh wrap up too with uh with why. I'd like Scott to wrap up with why.
Yeah, um and I I have to say, I've worked with a lot of egg societies, the Glendon Egg Society is really an amazing group of people. When they say five thousand hours of volunteer work, break that down, that's over ninety-six hours a week. That these volunteers are putting into this community, you have a well-oiled machine out there and. The new ice plant, five hundred thousand, they didn't come to you for money, they put, took a loan and they have just paid it off. Like, these people are so committed and it's just really been a real pleasure to work with them for sure.
Thank you, uh Counselor Swager.
Yeah, thanks for all the input, I. Sitting on the C two board and we uh had a really good meeting last night, but we had a, an engineer come down and. Presents a lot of the issues at the C two and, you know, some of them are similar to yours and I, I just hope you don't get into the situation, you know, that I. That we're sort of in now where they're talking about, you know, the original boilers that were put in were, you know, su-. Super low efficiency, like forty, forty-one percent efficient and and I'm thinking, wow, condensing boilers nowadays are ninety-five percent efficient, so. Just things like that, and uh, cause I don't, it says Reward Construction, but are they mechanical also or they're just construction? And so I'm kind of questioning who's, I mean, I'm getting into details, but just to make sure that you make sure that you're. You know, have the right people doing the work and and um sort of not end up like we sort of ended up at the C two.
Uh go ahead.
Yeah, I'm fairly familiar with uh some of the issues in the C two, um yeah, that that's what we want to avoid, I mean, I I know. We, we know it's a big ask, um but by doing it all at once, we have the opportunity to do it right. Um rather than kind of going and piecing it together after the fact, uh this company specializes uh in this kind of work. There, this is the same company that poured the the slab for the for the for Rogers Place in Edmonton, um they've come with a ton of accolades. Um but yeah, I mean, like you say, to to go ahead and and replace and fix stuff after the fact, it's gonna cost. How many more times that it would have done to, to, it would have been to do it right from the beginning, right? I know the condenser there at the C two, you guys just did that one. I don't, I I don't know off the top of my head, I don't know where I would find out how much that cost to do recently, but it needed to be done in twenty seventeen. Uh and I think the quote back then, when when we had quoted for it was just shy of three hundred thousand dollars in twenty seventeen, so. I don't know what would it cost to do that now, but I bet it was triple that in my guess, I I don't know for sure, but. Uh that's, that's kind of what I would anticipate, you know, like when we did, when they did the ice plant in twenty eighteen. Being around, you know, a half a million dollars or so, I know that the Cold Lake Norths was one point three. I think Elk Point's planning on doing theirs for one point four, so for ju- for just the plant, right, so it's, things just continue to rise. Especially if you try to fix them after the fact, right, so.
Okay, no, I I appreciate your input and it sounds like you you got a good grip on it anyway there, so, thanks.
Counselor Slipchuk?
Yeah, so another question is, so if you got, if we go forward to all these upgrades and everything, uh does it. Give you other opportunities for summer events then that you can see happening, extra funding coming in?
Yeah, so again, uh I think you can kind of tell by the drawings, I mean, it would make it a very attractive place, I think, like even, even right now, people, the people who use it. They really enjoy coming out there, uh you know, I I think I cut, touched on it when we met in in December there, but it's twenty-five minute drive. But uh you know, it it's a small, it's it's a small ask to drive twenty-five minutes down the road in a quiet highway rather than, you know, driving. Uh you know, forty minutes down the Anthony Hyundai or 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 Yellowhead if you were in the city and you had to travel all over to for practices for a kid anyhow. Um so put into perspective, it's it's relatively close for for access for pretty much anybody in the Lakeland or 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 the M D. Um but yeah, you know, if we if we enhance it to the way where we envision it and I'm, if you can kind of picture wh- what we're, what we see on the paper there. Uh people are gonna be excited to come out to that, to that arena, right, and uh. The the possibility or the poss- potential, I mean, I've I've gotten three phone calls already in about the last three weeks. Uh from the Lakeland Lacrosse that they want to know, are you guys gonna be shutting down for sure this summer, because they are chomping at the bit to use the space as well, so. We're looking at utilizing it year round, it won't just be a hockey arena, it's gonna be a sports facility. Um that combined with with the hall and stuff, I mean, it it's got a ton of potential to to uh. That we can, we can maximize and and if it's becomes a lot more attractive place to visit, uh people will be excited to come and to to support us, right, so.
Alright, thank you, I don't see any other questions, any final comments?
I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
I I just kind of want to say thank you, thank you for having us today, I think, I believe by now you guys understand what we're trying to achieve. Uh we started out focusing our efforts on the dire necessities, the critical repairs. Uh however, with amazingly positive support from the Village of Glendon and the always strong-willed dedication of the Glendon Agricultural Society. We realize a special opportunity to expand our vision, I have, we are here sincerely asking for your help and your partnership. Uh to complete that vision for the Glendon Arena. Uh there are obviously some critical repairs that need to be completed, such as the brine header, the the ammonia condenser, the arena floor slab. And the hockey boards, they've all been professionally assessed and are deemed to be at the end of their lifespan. Uh with the preliminary work we've done, uh we believe the timing could not be better to perform these necessary repairs as well as upgrade. The support and operational spaces and modernize the facility as a whole to bring it up to a similar standard as the rest of the sports facilities in the M D of Bonneville. Uh the price to achieve essentially a new multipurpose recreational facility, uh preparing it completely for another fifty-plus years. Is a very cost-effective solution relatively, relatively to building a new building, relative to building a new building. Uh the large motivating factors for us to really push to get this all done at once are obviously necessity. A large part of this project is vital to avoid a major failure, uh it will be pure luck to complete another hockey season. Uh through our vetting process, we have chosen a highly achieved construction company with local roots, having played hockey in our arena as kids. They have shown a strong desire to be involved and their expertise to complete uh this project. In its entirety, within the five to six months offseason window, they're ready to go now, right, um which is really important. Uh the construction costs, again, we talked about this, they rise every year, uh we know how much it costs to do everything properly now. Uh when we have the company here without piecing it together, it's reasonable to suggest that in five to ten years, the cost of this work will only go up. Especially when these desirable improvements that we'd like to do become crucial to, you know, to repair. Um our, the interior of our building is tired, the Glendon Egg Society has done an amazing job over the last five decades. To perform the necessary upgrades, uh new ice plant in twenty eighteen and complete upgrade to the entire building envelope in the twenty teens. Highlight their self-rezil- uh reliance and dedication to protecting this asset. However, there are several interior accessibility issues as well as interior flooring, fixtures, seating. Numerous commercial steel doors are all well past or approaching their life expectancy. Um in closing, the Glendon Arena is an auxiliary sports facility, serving thousands of hockey and lacrosse participants in the M D of Bonneville every year. The lack of a minor hockey association became an awfully advantageous situation. By absorbing the pressure of the ice demand from uh Bonneville, Cold Lake and surrounding area, we now have all of our weekday ice. And the majority of our weekends fully booked, in turn, this keeps our community lively, healthy and engaged and in the spirit of, or and in. The spirit of providing a unique value to the M D and the Lakeland. Uh this arena is an extremely positive effect for our community and the M D. We are excited to uh increasingly host patrons from near and far and with your key partnership. Uh we envision our facility will impress and excite everyone who utilizes the Glendon Arena at present and generations to come, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, any other final questions or? Yes, um.
Will Ruth, you let us know one way or another about the C F E P grant when you hear?
Yes, uh I can call, I'll text all of you.
Sure.
You can be relatively sure, when I get that grant, you'll hear me calling all over the place.
You promise? Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of the day. Yeah. We just need to make a motion here.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept as information.
Alright. Thank you Deputy Eve Skarsen for making this motion to the Council's acceptance of presentation by Glendon Agricultural Society regarding the utilization. Of the M D funding in two thousand twenty-four as information furthermore directs administration to bring their requests for additional funding. Support for the Glendon Arena two thousand twenty-five renovation uh project to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, did you have, one second, Counselor Slipchuk?
Yeah, could we um, cause like, there there is a time limit here, timeframe for them. Is it, would it be wise to put a date to have information brought to us by a certain on council meeting?
Uh from who?
From from us, like from our uh administration and on funding, possible funding of uh.
Well, we'll probably, we'll probably discuss this next uh council committee meeting, I think, so.
So do we put that in there that goes into the next council meeting for discussion?
We can, I'll, I can talk to the Susan after the meeting here and we can set something up, Donnie.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried, we're gonna take a five-minute break, thank you. All right, welcome back. I think we're still at three point, three point two. And you're next on our list. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Reeve and all of council. My name is April Baxter. I'll be filling in for Tracy Tiedemann to present the, uh, finance fourth quarter. Uh, so this quarter was especially busy for for our team. Uh, as you can see, uh, with our payables, we had an increase of one hundred and seventy-nine invoices. Now, that that increase is due to a lot of our, um, progress payments coming through now with our capital projects uh, and the typical spending of our yearly budget. Uh, although the, um, invoices increased, the amounts, uh, from last year did not. So we do have a little bit of a decrease, uh, in the total, um, payments, um, slight decrease, uh, in our yearly tax, uh, payments that fluctuates every year, um, and smaller invoice amounts. Uh, but still steady, so our department was really, really pushing those invoices out, so, uh, and we have utilities. So utilities are going steady as well. We had, uh, we billed out, uh, for the quarter, one hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and nineteen forty-six. Uh, of that, uh, just over eighty-six hundred is outstanding. Uh, so we do have, according to our P I T R, we do have, um, transfer to taxes that we do. But for the end of December, that doesn't happen till January. So we do see a little bit of a difference here, uh, with the mail strike and, um, you know, Christmas time, we did do see some of the payments dropping off there. Um, on on the plus side, we do have an increase in people setting up, uh, emails for their invoices, so that's a good sign. Okay, counts receivable, uh, we billed out, uh, just over five hundred and ninety-six thousand in the quarter. Uh, outstanding, we're looking at just around two hundred and forty-four thousand. So what we're doing, um, the majority of the invoices come through the other departments, so we've been working really close with the other departments, uh, to improve our collection on some of these items. Uh, and of course, being our month end, year end, we're going to be looking to clean a lot of this up as well. Uh, yeah, so that's, uh, that's the finance team in a nutshell. Was there any questions?
I'm not seeing none yet, so thank you.
A lot of numbers, a lot of, yeah. Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm here to do the H R payroll department quarterly report.
Just press your mic on. Yeah, there you go.
Um, so this is basically the same thing that we see every time that I come here. We have active staff, new hires and terminations. They will always, um, there's going to be a variance always, and it's due to the number of staffing that we have for seasonal demand. So we do see fluctuations coming and going. October, for example, November, those are really strong months for our seasonal staff from, uh, T N U and Parks, et cetera, that are leaving, and then we start looking for our winter staff starts in November for Canusu. So those are always large numbers along with spring. We have Canusu leaving and then we're hiring again in the summer months. Recruitment is pretty much the same, um, positions are recruited, employment contracts are drafted up and orientations are put in place for all of our new people coming and going. Uh, projects that we did this year was we finalized our H R handbook. We did implement a human resource information system, which be very beneficial to both payroll and H R. We did a winter seasonal recruitment that was put online. Exit interviews were also online for our seasonal people that are leaving. We did a compensation and are continuing to finalize our compensation review. And service awards were done at our Christmas party this year. Payroll's been busy with adjustments for B F R A following the ratification of their new union agreement. Um, they have done eight-year-end courses. We do have Galen now in charge, so Silka is away, so there's some training that needs to go on there for year end. And they're they're working into rolling over year end and preparing for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, uh.
Just curious, does the the new hire, so there's so much more, is that, we didn't hire at Canusu last year, or is there just way more this year, or?
There are more this year than there were last year. They were trying to just figure out the demands of of the hill last year. So there was less overall last year than this year.
Okay.
Counselor.
Are we see this year as more typical, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Crick.
Yeah, just looking at, so, uh, terminations, does that include people that have just, uh, retired or quit or moved?
It would be anything.
Anything, okay.
Yeah, the people that would be leaving for seasonal, people that have moved to different locations. Yeah, it would be anybody, end of employment.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Swiger.
Um, yeah, bar charts are fun, but it's, um, can you tell me what, uh, what's sort of the average total number of staff we have working in the summer vice winters? So, because ski hills, a lot of those people are sort of temporary, right?
Yes, we usually hire approximately, I'm going to say fifty-ish at the hill, anywhere from forty to fifty. And in the summertime, we're probably looking close to seventy-five now. Because we've taken all the caretakers on it there, and that's become a massive increase in the hiring.
Do we have like seventy full-time staff all the time at the M D, or what's that number?
Seventy?
I'm just guessing, I'm asking you.
Um, full-time people, we have approximately one hundred and sixty, sixty-five people, depending on the time of the year.
Okay.
Seasonal, we're looking at about seventy. So overall, we're look, we're two thirty to two fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
You're free to go, I think. Good job.
So I'm I'm without managers today, so I get to, uh, present the I T department, uh, for you.
All right.
Um, and the, uh, total help desk tickets, uh, for the quarter is four hundred and nine. It's slightly, uh, going down, uh, from earlier this in the beginning of the year. Um, our total tickets, um, twenty-four all told, or for this quarter was four hundred and nine. The second slide looks like it's pretty much the same information sliced across, uh, the years. Uh, ticket resolution time, um, they are able to resolve approximately two hundred and sixteen issues, um, within an hour. And, uh, some of them take a little bit longer, but they have a pretty good, um, um, re- resolution rate. Uh, our security risk, um, is, um, down from the last quarter. And, uh, sitting at six point six, it was seven point three the last quarter. The industry, uh, score is six point nine, so we're doing very well as far as, uh, security is concerned. And our risks statistics, um, we had two hundred and eighteen new risks in the last twenty days. Uh, we've mitigated, um, twelve hundred and ninety-two risks. And, uh, there are eight hundred and forty-six risks unresolved that are being, uh, currently, um, worked on. So, um, as far as our security coverage score goes, this is, um, the work that our our provider does for us, our Arctic Wolf does for us. And so our score right at the moment is sitting at about a hundred percent, uh, which is very good. I mean, you can't do it any better than that. So we're well, um, our systems are well secured. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, if I'm able to.
Counselor Swiger. Oh, sorry, Counselor Swiger.
That's okay. Yeah, thanks for that. You just tweaked me. You said, uh, security advisor, somebody, something wolf, some company? What was that about?
So, uh, as through the reef, as you know, Counselor Swiger, we do have an external, um, security contractor that monitors our systems twenty-four hours a day to make sure that, um, our our systems are not being exposed to any security risks.
Okay, what was, who was that again? What was the name of that?
Their name is Arctic Wolf.
Arctic Wolf, interesting. So they, uh, out of like, are they a huge company worldwide, or are they local or something?
Um,
not sure.
I don't have that information with me. I apologize.
But I had one other question, um, in the I T, I T department, uh, who do we actually support? Who do we support?
Pardon, pardon me?
No, I'm sorry. Uh, who, uh, who do we support in I T? Is it just the M D, or do we help? We still support fire and whatever, and so I'm asking that question, yeah.
Okay, through through the reef, yes, we do, uh, support other organizations. We do provide I T support to the C two organization as well as to B R F A.
Okay, thank you.
As well as, um, once in a while, we provide some services for Glendon.
Okay.
Well, I think the B R F A one is done now, isn't it, or?
Transition, probably, right?
Through the reef, my understanding is that we are still providing some support in the setup of their new facility, but they do have their own I T manager now, so, um, that will, um, become less and less.
Uh, Counselor Slipcheck.
No, I just want to say, uh, thank you to the I T department because they they're doing a good job because, uh, school board just got hit here not long ago with the city of Cold Lake, town of Bonneville, like, they're doing great. So that's good to see. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I also get to present the occupational health and safety, uh, quarterly report.
Just hogging the mic today, eh?
Uh, I am, I'm on this. Uh, so, um, twenty twenty-four was actually a really good year, uh, for our health and safety program. Um, in, um, the, um, you'll see a significant drop in the inju- in this injuries overall. And, uh, we only had nine recordable, recordable injuries in twenty twenty-four. That's down from twenty-four and twenty-three. The property dan- damage sta- statistics, um, have dropped slightly in twenty twenty-four. Um, one successful campaign was the war program and, uh, which encouraged workers to walk around their vehicles prior to moving them, which is an area that sees, um, a large number of incidents if, um, if they don't do that. Um, our lagging indicators are focused on unwanted outcomes of the safety program, and they take a long time to change. So our lagging indic- indicators, injury and property damage are trending down, which is good. Our W C B case management, um, is, um, is a result of, uh, any W C B related injuries. Uh, the green line indicates our modified work claims, uh, where we have had to adjust the duties of our workers until they could come back to their regular duties. And the gold line indicates lost time injuries where the worker is unable to resume any work, um, the next day after, um, that injury. Ideally, we want to see no injuries, but when they do occur, we want to be able to keep our workers working, uh, wherever possible. Uh, this gap between modified and lost time shows good case management, which includes staying in touch with the worker and supporting them to get back to work as, uh, quickly as possible. Um, near misses, uh, we look for downward trends on our lagging indicators. Uh, we want to see an upward trend on our leading indicators. And, um, while near miss reporting is down in comparison to twenty twenty-three, in industry numbers show that at the M D, we have top-notch reporting for near misses. Our hazard identification has increased, um, and it's consistently high overall. And workers are being diligent in noting the hazards that are present in any work of sites. Our positive observations um, have increased significantly. Um, and in twenty twenty-four, we focused on reporting our positive observations to boost participation in the Safe Tap app use. These numbers are outstanding and show engagement with the safety management system. Uh, vehicle and equipment inspections, um, almost all our vehicle and equipment inspections are on electronic reporting now. Uh, inspections are at ninety-nine percent and show good numbers. We cannot compare with twenty twenty-three as we had not switched to fully electronic inspections yet. So, um, we have no reliable tracking for last year, or for twenty twenty-three, I should say. Uh, our leading indicators, um, is our hazard assessments, identifying hazards and applying the controls are a key part of the safety management system. Site-specific hazard assessments are done daily or even multiple times a day by our boots-on-the-ground folks as last-minute check to control hazards. And as these numbers increase, you should have less incidents, and our downward trend in lagging indicator supports this. Our leading indicators, our work site inspections now include campgrounds and landfills as well as facilities and field tasks. This is an important number as we see more managers and supervisors attending sites and interacting with the staff. In addition, workers are able to take ownership over their sites by taking pride in their inspection process. Workplace inspections are all about looking and eliminating hazards. Um, we did conduct, um, an AMSA core audit this year. Um, it was an internal audit and our final score was ninety-eight percent. Uh, so this confirms that we have a robust, well-functioning safety program. And I know the, um, staff in the health and safety department are very proud of the improving score and, um, are, um, we improved by about seven percent from, uh, the last audit that was conducted. Um, and these are some of the goals that they've been focusing on, um, over the last quarter. They've increased, um, in engagement in S M S through contests and programs such as the war program. And, uh, with improved safety culture, we see proactive reporting, um, that contributes to the leading indicators trending up. And we see lagging indicators begin to trend down. So, um, they, uh, had a good year this year. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Counselor Slipcheck, then Deputy Reeve Skarsen. Counselor Slipcheck, then Deputy Reeve Skarsen.
So with those numbers, we see, do we see a reduction in our expenses to WCB and all that?
Through the reef, so as you know, WCB has a three-year experience rating, so it takes three years for the, the good stuff to come, start showing up. We will start realizing some savings in the next year or two, and, and then even more than that in year three, subject to no additional significant injuries happening.
Well, that's good to see, but the most important thing is that with the safety and that, and looking at the hazard IDs, it looks like it's working, like, with hazard IDs, because your injuries have dropped off in incidents, so good job.
Thanks.
Did you have something, or?
Yeah, I do. So, well, it's great, I guess, to see such a drop in, in injuries. I'm sure we can do better yet. I'm just curious more so on the property damage, because you're still averaging like two a month? So what do you think some of these are? Is this like people backing into stuff, or how much is that, you know, costing us at the end of the day? Because it seems like a high number as well.
It, it varies through the reef. It does vary. I don't have the exact dollar number in front of me, but I do know that a lot of those property damage incidents did occur because people weren't doing their walk-around before they got in their vehicle and took off. And so I know that that has turned around, and there, that was one of the reasons why the Safety Department implemented the war program, to encourage people to do that, to remind them that that was an important piece of the work that they had to do. And so they are coming down. That program was implemented later this fall, and so at the beginning of this fourth quarter. So it didn't have much of a chance to impact what had already happened in twenty twenty-four. We're hopeful that twenty twenty-five will show much better statistics.
All right. Well, I'm just, I'm interested because, you know, maybe twenty twenty-five will be better. I would say that any owner of a company that was getting two pieces of equipment damage every month would be pretty upset about that, right? So hopefully, we're doing things that'll correct that for sure.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Counselor Swagert.
Yeah, could you just clarify what you mean by property damage? Is that damage to our, our equipment? Or when, because if you say property damage, I would think myself and residents would maybe think it was like, you know, grader backed through their yard or whatever, tore something up. So what does that actually mean?
So it means any damage that happened to any property, so buildings, vehicles, equipment, fence posts, any.
Yeah, okay. I think, I don't know if we need to know that, but I wouldn't mind sort of having a list once a year of what kind of damages that we're causing, I guess. Yeah, thank you.
I would say about ninety percent of that is vehicle damage, for sure.
I, I don't have that statistic with me today, but I can certainly find that out and send you an email with that information.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Just looking for a motion now, gentlemen. All right, thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making this motion. The council accepts the Corporate Services two thousand twenty-four fourth quarterly report as information. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto nine point four point one.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
I have RFD for the Bridge File seven two five one five, the Truman Bridge Damage Report. Bridge File seven two five one five, the Truman Bridge is located on Range Road four eighty-five, north of Township Road six twenty-three, in the northeast of six sixty-three, eight west of the fourth. On October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Truman Bridge sustained damage when a semi-truck hauling logs attempted to cross the bridge, striking the structure with the load. The bridge was immediately closed, and an initial assessment of the damage was performed in-house. It was determined that a more comprehensive inspection must be completed by a professional engineer to gauge the extent of the damage and the continued use of the bridge. After an inspection of the bridge by WSP Canada Incorporated, the bridge was reopened with a five-ton maximum weight capacity. Todd Honkla and Ryan Piche of Infrastructure Services will present a report, which is in Appendix A, to council on outlining the bridge issues and some options for the repair. The bridge assessment report for the Truman Bridge, performed by WSP, is included as Appendix A. So I'll have Todd and Ryan come up to present the report.
Not sure if it's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm coming after the finance quarterly.
We gotta get extended mic for you, I see. Oh, it's so short.
If I move it forward and lift it up, I think it'll be not too bad. So we put that headed up, and it's gone to sleep, but meanwhile, it's a bit near, so.
Counselor Swagert.
Yeah, but just even before Todd starts there, I'll just, I'll ask, because I think the question's been asked before, and Todd's not the guy to answer it probably, but when you see that, it was, you know, a big logging truck hit a bridge, and there's not a lot of loggers, and, and I thought it would have been easier to maybe do an insurance claim or something, and I, is there, was there any input at all on what the RCMP were able to do and track down a logger? I'm not sure who answered that, who answers that one, but somebody?
Okay, hopefully, I can answer a little bit about that. It's, oh, sure.
Through the reef, so, yeah, the RCMP were brought in to investigate this, as was public safety. The result was that essentially no suspects were identified. I know for our end, as far as public safety goes, we did some door locking in some of the nearby residents. Everybody was very obviously shocked and disappointed to see what had happened, but we did not identify anybody who might have been responsible for it. The RCMP closed their file down after about a week to ten days. They did not come up with a suspect either on this matter, so it's essentially closed on both counts.
Yeah, I guess I'd just say I'm, I'm disappointed. I mean, there's not, anyway, this, that's, is what it is, but it seems very strange that they couldn't find a logging company. They know where they're logging, they know where their routes are and whatever, but it is what it is, I guess.
Can I ask one question? This is going north or south, like, this picture?
This is facing south.
So the, the logging truck was going south?
Correct.
I still don't know to this day why a logging truck would be going south that way. It just doesn't even make sense to me. And who cleaned the logs up there? Who did the, do we know?
Yes, I was going to start out with that here at, uh, we did, of course, we were advised of the damage on the morning of Saturday, October twenty-sixth. This picture here was forwarded to us after the fact. In the meantime, someone had come and cleaned up all of, all this mess here and pushed everything off to the side, and it, they're very nice to do that work for us, but I guess they maybe removed potentially some evidence for the RCMP, and at the same time, they didn't provide their contact, name and contact information after the fact, which would have been nice and even better, yet maybe their pink slip insurance information, which they did not. So overall, not responsible accountability there for what happened there.
So who took this picture, you said?
Uh, this was forwarded by one of the watchmen, I believe it was, either the gravel pit or CNRL, had taken a, taken a picture of it, and, of course, they didn't do anything about it at the time, it was just a, look at this, and then they, when they heard about the issue after the fact, they forwarded us the picture. So anyways, of course, we don't have an insurance company on the hook for this damage. It would have been nice to, it's something where, to purpose today is to talk about moving forward, I guess, from it, not necessarily to look at it. I know the RCMP did do an investigation on it, and they did follow up a lead that we had, but they didn't ever end up laying any charges on that, or finding enough evidence to substantiate anything. Okay, so what I'm hoping to do today with you is to talk about the road network and the economic benefits surrounding the bridge, based on its current usage. I wanted to review the condition of the existing structure, go through a number of repair and replacement options and costs, and look at our potential sources of bridge grant funding that we could seek on, on this structure. So what I'm showing here, this is our, our MD Bonneville Road Classification Map. This is probably the closest thing that we have to a master transportation plan for the MD. This was something that came out of a consultant study, I think it was about seven years, seven or eight years ago. It is something where very much work in progress, living document, just to kind of flag where our important routes are, and where we should be looking potentially at upgrading roadways. It is, if we're looking, you all see my laser pointer there? Looking at Truman Bridge, Truman Bridge is, of course, is right on four eighty-five there. It is on the map here, we're showing the four eighty-five corridor largely being arterial road industrial. The short section where Truman Bridge is located is shown as a local gravel road. I just wanted to take the time to read the arterial road industrial. It's roadway that typically carries over two thousand vehicles per day, has a high truck traffic volume above fifteen percent or above three hundred trucks per day, has an eleven and a half meter top with, with a pavement surface of hot mix ash vault concrete, forty meter right-of-way, provides direct connection to a provincial highway, another class-one roadway or class-two roadway. So this will be a roadway that has fairly wide shoulders to handle truck traffic. Low, class-four local, where Truman Bridge is at, roadway that typically carries less than two hundred vehicles per day, has a low proportion of truck traffic, less than five percent, or less than ten trucks per day, has an eight-meter top with, with a gravel driving surface, and a standard right-of-way of twenty meters. It is not likely to provide direct access to a provincial highway. It provides a direct connection to a class-two roadway, to another class-three road, or three roadway, or a class-four roadway. So having this jump from a class-one A to a four, to a one-A, isn't ideal in the first place. Probably wasn't thought a whole lot about when they did the map, but when we're talking about spending a lot of money on, potentially on Truman Bridge, it's something we should have a, have a closer look at. Something I also want to talk about is if we do punch this orange line through here, of course, the orange lines are cheap to draw on a drawing like this, a lot more expensive to build. We are really introducing a corridor that is competing with the provincial highways for that kind of traffic, the big heavy industry traffic. One of our biggest barriers in the MD of road and transportation connectivity, of course, is the Beaver River, and this would introduce another crossing for industry to use over top of the Beaver River. Just to kind of go through our various highway crossings, I did take a, a couple of our traffic counters for a couple of days and put them on signposts pointing at those provincial highways, just to get an idea of kindly rough, what kind of traffic we're seeing on those things. If you look at Highway eight eighty-one there, we're seeing about a hundred trucks per day on that. If we compared that to Truman before the accident, we were about five to ten trucks per day. We got a fairly big gap in connectivity, of course, till we hit Highway forty-one. Highway forty-one is probably our biggest traffic roadway out there, as far as the bridge goes. It's about five thousand vehicles and about nine hundred trucks per day, of course, a lot of traffic on that road. We skip past Lazard, and then we're going to hit over to Highway eight ninety-two north of Ardmore. That one is running at about three thousand vehicles a day and about five hundred trucks per day, another big heavy industry road. And then, of course, we hit Highway twenty-eight south of Cold Lake, and that one's about three thousand six hundred vehicles a day, but we're down to about three hundred trucks per day. And then, of course, eight ninety-seven, we're about thirteen hundred vehicles a day and about eighty trucks per day. So when we do talk about our traffic counts on Truman, they likely are based on current usage and local road traffic. We would, it wouldn't be surprising to see more of a shared load of those, of those seven hundred trucks, or seven hundred vehicles and a hundred trucks per day that Highway eight eighty-one are seeing. As soon as you introduce a road that has a fifteen-minute time-saving for truckers, I would expect that, that they're probably going to take that route if they're able to save some time. Uh, this is just a little closer up, showing some of the traffic counts. Of course, we had that orange line on there for four eighty-five. We're not currently built to a class-one A standard on that road. We're paved for a good chunk of it. We're built to a class-two or class-three standard for most of it. North and south of the bridge, we're probably to class-two. We're at the bridge itself, of course, where our class-four gravel road is. We're sitting at about a hundred vehicles per day at the bridge with about five to ten trucks per day. You go up north towards fifty-five, we're up to about three hundred vehicles a day. You go south to six thirty, we're up at about a hundred and twenty vehicles a day. Did have a chance to talk to a few of our stakeholders in advance of this presentation here today, to kind of get an idea of what some of our economic activities are there right now, and kind of what the current use of the bridge are. Of course, this is really heavy industry area as far as CNRL activity goes. They have a lot of infrastructure, both north and south of the river, at this location. There is a compression, compressor station, just about right there. They have a treatment plant up off of Highway fifty-five. Of course, it's the less commonly, more commonly used one is down at Bear Trap, which sees the most traffic. I'm not even sure if this one is active right now or not, but it, it is there. Now, when I did talk to CNRL, they did mention that they probably have currently about fifty to sixty operational crossings of this bridge every day. Most of this is light traffic, it's just maintainers and operators are that are going back and forth. They do have some larger sanders and, and tractors that have used the bridge that are underneath the old weight limit, and they, a lot of this traffic, when we did have to close the bridge, had to go the long way around, and they were saying that it's very disruptive and costly when we did have the bridge closed. Even with us reopening the bridge at the lowered weight restriction, some of that traffic is still having to go around a long way. I did talk to them briefly about what the benefits of a new bridge at this location would be, and the first word out of his mouth was huge. Like he's saying, this would really open up the road to having, being able to haul fluids across the bridge and service rigs, and, and that would be a great benefit for them. I did talk to a couple, or we did talk to a couple of the residents and agricultural producers in the area. One of the big concerns that came up there was, of course, emergency vehicle access. They're running ambulances out of Bonneville, and of course, those would need to cross. They're running ambulances out of Bonneville and of course, uh those would need to cross that bridge. Uh or or it's a long detour and the uh fire truck service is coming out of Goodrich. And so that uh uh is another one where they would potentially use the bridge and at the five ton posting, a number of those vehicles aren't able to get across. Uh when we did have the bridge closed, we're talking at an extra ten to uh fifteen minutes in response times. I I mean that emergency vehicle access is also an issue for CNRL because of course they need emergency services as well sometimes. Uh the residents, uh they talked about, I did talk, we did get some good feedback from one of the residents there. Uh they, the old bridge, they're uh they're running uh livestock back and forth between pastures on both sides of the river and they were using the old bridge. They won't be able to use the new bridge or the uh the damaged bridge with the five ton load posting because it's uh uh too, gonna be too heavy and so that's gonna be an issue. Uh I did get some comment from them for as far as if we ever did replace with a new bridge here. Uh the benefit for them on that is for this particular is uh they typically run about three hundred loads of silage on a good year is what they were mentioning. And that those are contracted trucks at a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour. And so they felt that tho- those silage trucks, under the old load restriction, they're able to go across empty. Uh now they can't cross at all, uh and if you did have a replacement bridge in there, they would be uh all be able to cross. And uh they felt that that number up to their bottom line in their operation would be out twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Uh I've also got Truman Gravel Pit shown here, uh that is privately owned pit. Uh it uh will make arrangements with contractors to uh bid on large civil construction projects. And of course, uh for gravel pit and contractors hauling gravel, uh travel distance is is a big thing. And it's really affects how they're, how well they're be able to sharpen their pencils when they bid on our big road and bridge contracts. Uh eh on those unit rates is how how far they have to haul the gravel. Uh it will affect both the competitiveness of the gravel pit and the competitiveness of the contractors who are using the gravel pit. Uh I am showing uh logging up there, I've recently become aware that logging trucks might be wanting to use the bridge, but we didn't talk to them. So a couple of years ago, we did do a cost benefit analysis, a very simplistic one on about fifty-six pending bridge projects. These were ones that were kind of on the radar, reaching the end or approaching the end of their service life. Uh just to get an idea if there's any uh of these bridges that are are not really of great value to replace or not. We did do uh that on, this was part of, or this bridge was included in that. Uh we took our hundred truck, our hundred vehicles a day, we counted on the bridge, uh we bumped it up to ten trucks per day. And uh uh basically, all all we did is uh we said, okay, the benefit is shortened travel distance. Uh we're gonna uh run them a third the length of this pink line, each of those vehicles for seventy-five years. And we're gonna compare the operating cost on that to the cost of the bridge. And uh uh so we we threw some basic vehicle operating costs at those distances. And uh we also assigned a twenty dollar uh per vehicle time value. Uh and a forty dollar uh uh an hour uh truck for, truck time value and uh and use those numbers. And for this particular bridge, that worked out to about uh a ratio, a benefit cost ratio of four or uh four dollars in user Bennett. For every dollar, tax dollar, we would be spending on the structure. Or to flip that, uh you'd have uh four dollars in user pain for every dollar we saved if we chose not to replace the structure when the time eventually comes. So once we look at the damage that was done to the bridge itself. What it uh, what we found uh on that Saturday morning when we uh came to have a look at it, it really looked like somebody had uh. Uh dragged a sixteen foot object through a sixteen, a fifteen foot space since the bridge was last inspected. And uh uh but they managed to do a very thorough job and buckled uh ten out of ten of the horizontal roof braces. Uh which uh when I do look at this bridge as an old bridge inspector, I guess. If I, you were to ask me what the two most important members on this bridge are, they are this top court of this trust. And the the top court of this trust. There is a lot of compression, compressive loads in those members. Uh there, it's very, very important to the integrity of this bridge that they stay straight and true and square. And those trusses stay stray uh stay plumb. And I know one of the big concerns, a lot of these buckled members that are showing on the upper roof bracing. Their intent is to hold those main members straight, uh without those supporting it. What our main concern is, is once you put uh that big compression load on them, that this is gonna happen. Because those uh aren't, they're restraining that from happening. And so that is where a lot of our concern from the uh, from the uh engineering assessment side is coming from. Is the stability of the trusses uh may be compromised uh with that damage. Uh now, if we look at the uh trusts in general, uh often there's many different reasons to replace an old trust like this. They're very resilient, these things last uh quite a long time, I'm always surprised at how long these things last, this one's eighty years old and it was still ticking. And it was uh even though it was in our ninety million dollars, it was definitely one that I was kind of thinking in the back of my mind, hey, maybe we can push this one. It uh uh it's one, but it is one where uh often you end up replacing, just they're functionally obsolete. They can't carry, uh they're, they they don't have the right geometry, they're not in the right spot, uh they're uh, they have got a load restriction on them. Uh big industry can't use them, uh uh it's uh, that is a very common reason these get replaced rather than uh than uh condition. Uh I know if you get a salted roadway, uh very often corrosion is an issue, they just rot out due to the corrosion. Of course, this is on a gravel road that doesn't get salted, so overall, from a corrosion standpoint, the condition isn't too bad. I I I I don't have any concerns there, I've seen way worse. Uh one of the last things that we're kind of watching for always, once you get a trust this old is uh 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 there's something called steel fatigue. And what ends up happening is it's like a paperclip that you bend too many times, it eventually just breaks. It's uh and part of the problem for an inspector when they do go look at a uh at a trust like this, is we know steel fatigue is a thing. Uh we're kind of watching for maybe the initial signs of cracking and I I know when I did talk to the inspector out at the site, they were kind of saying, well, you know, might, there might be a little bit uh starting out. But it's hard to tell and nothing, nothing really showed up on their report. But something to keep in mind when we do talk about remaining life on this, even though I say, oh, it looks in pretty good condition for an old, eighty-year-old trust. Is it's a little bit like if if somebody took a paperclip behind their back and they bent it eight times and they didn't tell me how many times they bent it. Then they give it to me to inspect and say, well, what condition is this paperclip been in and it's a, it's in pretty good condition. Well, how many, how many more times can you bend it until it breaks? And uh I I s- I can't tell you and that inspector who's inspecting that can't tell either. I mean, we're thinking that it's got some good life even even still left in it, but it, we're really, it's a big question mark about how much uh remaining life this trust would have. Even if this uh damage didn't exist.
So what would you, what would you expect for like a catastrophic failure of one of the beams? It's not gonna just, the whole bridge isn't just gonna fall into the river?
I, old eighty-year-old trust bridge is a little bit like a box of chocolate, you really don't know what you're gonna get. Uh it's, if you go down, I mean, I was trained actually under the American Bridge Inspection System and they would call us a fracture critical structure. Which means potentially if one had something in, a certain wrong thing failed in this trust, it could end up in the river. I mean, it's, it's very low risk, I haven't heard of a whole lot happening, it, a lot of times there's, these old trusses have a lot of internal redundancies in them that uh. I I I I know I had one, I don't know if I should mention it or not, where the bottom cord ended up uh breaking on it. And uh the uh trust itself jammed itself up against the abutment. And the break only ended up opening that much before that happened and uh, of course, we kind of panicked at it at our end and we kind of. Uh but it didn't really become public knowledge and uh it's something we dealt with and it's something, that's why we inspect bridges. But uh uh fracture critical does mean additional risk from a redundant bridge. And these are fracture cr- critical bridges, they don't build them like this, they're very elegant design, but there is a risk factor there that doesn't exist with a new structure. And I look at the remainder of the bridge, of course, when we're gonna be talking about the repairs, I'm just gonna be talking about the trust. But uh something to keep in mind is this is uh an old bridge with additional elements uh beyond the trust. Uh the deck itself uh is composed of two layers of planks, there's uh, you're looking at the bottom there on the left-hand side. Uh those planks are transverse, uh the subdecking, that's relatively good condition as far as I can see. It's uh, I think we got at least ten years left in those things. Uh on the surface, there's some longitudinal planks which are not so great condition right now. But that's more of a low-cost maintenance item to swap those out, the big cost.
Do you have like a uh painting program that you have with these bridges?
Not for these, see, we don't paint these kind of bridges anymore, it's just too costly. Uh you'll find a lot of these bridges have lead paint, paint and almost guaranteed this one has. You don't tend to gain a lot, I mean, lead, lead-based paint is a wonderful corrosion inhibitor, it's just you can't use it because of the environment anymore. Uh I know we did repaint a trust back in Calgary when I was there. Uh I think that project cost about two million dollars, that painting project, so it is not a, not a cheap thing. And from a lifecycle perspective, I'm not, I know there's still some proponents of painting out there, I'm not one of them. It's, the lifecycle value just isn't there anymore. Uh that trust that we spent two million dollars painting, uh five years later, I'm seeing the corrosion coming through all over the place on it. And uh uh you're just not getting the light, especially on an old, when we do do, uh painting is more of a proactive maintenance item on a bridge. Uh when we do talk proactive maintenance on bridges, uh it's something that's best practice on new bridges or bridges in really good condition. To keep them from getting in bad condition, once they do get in bad condition, it is kind of uh patching holes and trying to extend life. It's, the painting is something where it's really debatable whether it's of value and I'm not uh, I'm not in the court of of seeing, seeing the value there. I've seen enough uh paint jobs uh go uh very expensive and not have a lot of benefit at the end of the day. Uh so if I'm looking in the right-hand photo, that's our uh abutments or one of our two abutments there. Uh that would be uh the last uh item there, uh where it's got a steel beam over top of timber piles. Of course, this is a seventy-nine-year-old bridge, those timber piles are only theoretically supposed to last forty years. But uh they're, they do appear stable when I look at them, I'm not, they're not leaning or shifting or dropping or uh uh big splits in them or anything. So uh they're not something that is alarming, but a lot of the timber, a lot of the uh abutment and the uh wire tiebacks and that are buried in the ground. So we really don't have a good feel as to their condition because it is buried. Uh we just come and we have a look at the stability, the abutment and the stability of the elements and react. Uh there's nothing indicating here that there's gonna be the uh urgent right-of-way need. Uh but it's something where assigning a long-term life is something where we can't really do that. Because there will be a point where these do start leaning and twisting, once they start rotting out underground. And uh that will start to happen fairly quickly, once that does happen.
I'm just curious, do you think you could build a bridge today that would last eighty or ninety years?
Yep.
Yeah?
Oh, I think some of the ones we're building today could last a hundred. It really depends on how much salt they see and how much truck traffic they see. It's uh, it's, some of the stuff, I mean, these abutments, it's uh creosote timber, uh we're doing galvanized steel piles. Those galvanized steel piles will be there for a long time.
So when you build a bridge, any of the new bridges that we built, do you, you put life say, uh like lifespans on them?
Yeah, new bridge, they're targeting seventy-five years on them now.
So why not a hundred years?
Uh you could, uh there are some applications, I know within the bridge code, I I better. Be careful on what I'm talking about here because it's uh engineer territory as opposed to technologist territory. But it is, uh they have done hundred-year designs on bridges in certain applications out there. Of course, the more you're talking con- additional concrete cover, additional types of concrete, uh better materials, stainless steel as opposed to uh. Uh i- i- and it starts to drive costs up, whether that's something that we need or not. Typically, what's done is the seventy-five-year bridge these days and it's very, actually very hard to not buy a seventy-five-year bridge. If you said you want, only wanted a forty-year bridge, what they'd probably do is build us a seventy-five-year bridge and then say it was worth forty years. Okay, so uh now we're gonna get into our options uh a bit here, uh I've got a number of options I'd like to put in front of you. Um there are many times where do-nothing is not going to be an option with a bridge. Where by the time I get in front of you to talk about that specific bridge, it's just not going to uh uh be something that's realistic. Uh this is one where I did talk to our engineer about it and we think we possibly could get away with a do-nothing approach. Uh I mean, the damage is all overhead, it's easy for an inspector to see. As long as we have really frequent inspections of people going out there checking to make sure that those still, trusses are still nice and straight where they need to be. And nothing new is developed. I know if we did take this approach, we'd maybe do some brainstorming on uh, on how we could monitor the straightness of of those trusses. Uh I just have to figure out how to draw it, draw an imaginary line across that bridge and compare it uh every couple of years, just to see if things are changing or not. What it would mean, it's uh, we're still gonna be looking at our five-ton load restriction. Uh definitely, I would say there's a higher risk that there are problems are developing. Uh we're monitoring the performance of the damage structure and uh, but something I do want to let you know is it is a very reactive strategy. Because it is so reactive, if we did get to a point where something went sideways on us on this bridge and we decide we need to replace it. You're probably talking about a year longer of closure time because you gotta allow time for us to do geotechnical, we've got a survey, uh environmental assessments. Uh this one's gonna need DFO permitting, it's gonna need Transport Canada Nav Waters permitting, I believe. And so you're talking a big time delay that that bridge is out of service where it wouldn't otherwise be if we take a proactive approach to uh doing work.
So how would we be at in any different spot than we are today then?
Pardon me?
How do we, how would we be in a different spot than what we are today?
Uh or 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 before, like a year ago?
Or a year ago, whatever, like, I mean, it's, it, let's say, five or eight or ten years down the road, you said, okay, well, now we need to fix this bridge.
Yeah, I, what it is, is right now with that damage overhead, I'm not confident that this isn't gonna happen over time. That's something I'm gonna be watching for, it's something our inspectors are gonna be watching for. Uh if that damage didn't exist, I'm far more confident that uh these things are are are, most of the time, they're very slowly developing. And it's uh for other issues. Uh it is, if we don't do anything and just run traffic on this damaged structure, there is a higher risk that something is gonna happen that we would have to react to. And take this bridge out of service, it's uh.
Yeah, but my point is, is that we're, we are reacting to it right now, so if we're reacting to it now as opposed to ten years from now, what's the difference?
Yeah, I mean, we're uh definitely reacting to this traffic accident that happened here now. It's a, and it's something that, this bridge has a four-point-seven meter clearance over top of it. A new bridge is supposed to have at least five-point-four meters of clearance underneath it. Uh this is a risk item that even if we do come in and repair this damage, this is something that is still gonna be an issue going forward on this bridge. It's a, it's a eighty-year-old bridge designed for eighty-year-old traffic and eighty-year-old trucks. Today's traffic is something where it, the risk will be higher. Oh, sure.
Uh the reason we're reacting to it right now uh through the reef to Councilor Skarsen is because it now has been de-rated to five ton. Versus the the extra load that it could take, that's why if this wouldn't have happened, we wouldn't be reacting to it right now. Because it would be able to carry those heavier loads, the reason we're reacting to it right now is because it has been de-rated. If we did nothing, it could still stand for, you know, with proper inspections and maintenance, it could still stand, but it would still be at the five ton. And that's why it's uh, that's why we're at this point right now bringing this to council, is because we wanna uh find out if. If council is okay with leaving it at five ton or if they wanna go back to uh what the other, uh what the, what the higher rating of that uh structure was prior to the incident.
And what was it before?
Uh it was previously rated at a twenty-one ton truck, a twenty-eight ton semi or a thirty-two ton train vehicle.
And the weight of those vehicles, you could get those weights in those vehicles with that height?
It really depends, I mean, when I put my traffic counter out there, it just counts length, uh vehicle length doesn't tell you how heavy it is. But uh you can get that kind of length with a school bus or an RV or a uh a a pickup truck and a long trailer. It's uh, you, all, all it would have to be is to be the six meters is uh is, or over six meters long could be anything. Uh as far as the uh established like truck semi and uh, you really have to refer to the uh vehicle weight and dimension regulation. and dimension regulations within the Traffic Safety Act as far as what configurations those can be and what qualifies for a semi and what qualifies for...
Well, in your opinion, if it was, it's at 4.7, you want it to what, five meters, you said?
That's height clearance.
So how many trucks are being restricted right now because they're not, because it's at 4.7, do you think?
Probably not a whole lot. I mean, this logging truck, obviously, it was higher than that. There's not probably, it's something where in the MV, we don't have a lot of height clearance hazards. It's more common in the big city where you see a lot of damage to bridges because of height clearance issues. What you'll typically find for over, is quite common, a back hole on the back of a trailer. Sometimes they don't chain down the arm and it'll lift up, the idler locks will lift it up. And of course, that knuckle will hit a bridge. This is one here. I know we did have a similar bridge back in Calgary that had a bunch of overhead damage from a garbage truck with its forks up that went across the bridge. And it tried to convince us that the bridge bounciness contributed to it hitting it. And it, this one here, of course, you'd have to ask industry, all this different stuff that they want to haul.
So how many bridges do we have that are, that have the overhead rails or whatever?
We have two.
Just two?
This and Aylesworth. Our other two truss bridges, which are Lassard and Tillers, are both pony trusses, so they don't have the overhead members.
Two with this one?
Two with this one. So this, the, this one plus Aylesworth have the overhead members.
I think we're going to break for lunch because I think you have quite a few more options yet.
Yeah, I'm at slide nine of 16, I was hoping to go through a few of them. But it's good because we've got some good conversation going on here, so, sure, if you'd like to.
Yeah, let's break for lunch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back and continue, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that is option one, the do nothing option. I'm gonna move to option two here. Of course, option two is really our insurance claim. This is repairing the bridge to get it back to where it was a year ago. It, uh, really what we're doing is replacing all that damaged overhead bracing to stop our, our, our top, or stabilize our mean trusses. If we did proceed with this, we're talking about three quarters of a million dollars. Probably about six months for design to enter construction on that. Weight restriction, we're gonna go from our five tons back to our original twenty-one ton truck, twenty-eight tons semi, and thirty-two ton train vehicle. Definitely will have increased confidence in the structure. I know when we are checking and monitoring this. Far, far less worried about seeing something developing out there if we do do this work. It does still have that four point seven meter overhead clearance hazard. It remains, you could have something like this happen in the future, hopefully not. We do have, our inspector is estimating a ten-year remaining service life on this. Of course, we have talked, there is a lot of uncertainty in that estimate, could be longer, could be shorter. These old truss bridges, they can surprise you in both directions quite often.
Yeah, go ahead. I guess I gotta plug you in there.
Thank you. If we go the insurance route there, insurance pays for it all, or we have to pay?
Oh, they're paying nothing because we don't have an insurance company on that one.
There's no insurance, sorry. And then when you say estimated years, ten years remaining of lifecycle, in what, the parts that we replace, or the bridge?
That's the overall bridge. The parts that we replace actually will last probably longer, but of course, if you put a, have a fifteen-year-old vehicle and replace the transmission, the transmission may last a lot longer than the vehicle does at that point.
So you didn't really put, so you just don't have a estimated lifespan with option one then?
It's, oh, you, you could get the same lifespan, but I'm certainly not going to give you an estimate on that because I have no confidence that we're gonna get there. It's up in the air. It could be, you could get lucky, you could not, but I don't like counting on luck, so. So option three is our first bridge replacement option. This one takes our class four roadway and essentially counts as it as staying as a class four roadway indefinitely. This is a little gravel road bridge, is very similar to what you'd see going in on a lot of our gravel grid roads where we're not expecting to have to upgrade them. It's not designed for a future road upgrade, I guess some word of warning on this one. Part of the price tag is because we are able to square it up to the river and shorten it up. It's narrower. It's also one where we are following the, there's this S curve in the roadway right now to accommodate the old truss bridge. And there's a small twenty-meter right-of-way that that roadway's following. And this follows that right-of-way again. You can see the forty-meter right-of-way for the future road upgrade on the photo here. That, of course, we're not utilizing that because we're not utilizing that with this bridge. This bridge would have to go if we ever did want to upgrade the roadway. It's, it would not be suitable, it's not in the right orientation, and the geometry wouldn't be correct. So option four is we're building the bridge of the future and we're running today's gravel road over top of it. So what we're doing here is we're turning the bridge about twenty degrees counterclockwise. We're gonna make it a little bit longer, use more of a highway-type design, highway-type gridders. We're widening it up a little bit. This will be something that you'd run your class for a gravel road over top of it, so we'd need to build. You can see those orange lines would be a little bit of gravel road construction and embankment fill that would have to go in there to build this. We would, this bridge would be suitable if we do want to upgrade the road in the future for either a one, two, or three roadway. On the class one A, something to be aware of is class one A roadway is one and a half, is eleven and a half meters wide. This bridge is about, that they've costed out here is nine meters wide. It's not an issue if we did upgrade to one A, but you'd lose your shoulders. So you'd still have full lanes going across the bridge, but we'd have to transition barrier the shoulders off and then it would open up again. I've talked to our engineer about that. It's not a concern. It's done all the time. If we did want to have continuous shoulders, you'd have to add another ten to fifteen percent to the cost to add that additional width to, up to the full eleven meters, eleven and a half meters across the bridge. Option five is our full meal deal. This is grade base pave from six thirty to six thirty-two. Class two roadway includes replacement of the bridge. I'm not gonna spend too much time on it. I just want the cost in front of you of sixteen million dollars there in about three years to build. And option six is, of course, where we're taking a step back and putting on our critical thinking caps. And is this really the right direction at all, or should we do a little bit of dreaming of MD Bonneville thirty years down the road and seeing what we think it should maybe look like? And maybe the location of the bridge is totally wrong for that, and we should have a look, and maybe there's a better location, maybe there's a better. Of course, our path of least resistance is definitely going to be the four eighty-five A alignment where that black circle is. We do have our nice forty-meter right-of-way that's provided for that. We own the land. That's, that's big. All of these reds, and of course, the public is used to the corridor, so the public is, is, is not going to be concerned that there's major changes. One word of warning is I throw in a bunch of orange lines and red circles on here of possible ideas. Of course, there's many more ideas that could probably come up with. Each one of these red circles, we do not own the land for. It is something to be aware of. Which really means that in order for the project to proceed, you're either gonna have to have very cooperative and supportive landowners who are willing to sell you that land at the established MD rates, or we would, or we would potentially have to talk about the expropriation word, which I'm not sure is something council wants to talk about, or the project would not be able to proceed. When we do talk about grant funding for bridges, of course, there's some flex funding, and I'm not gonna get into the flex funding for, that can be used for other projects, but for bridge-specific grant funding, there's really two separate programs that I'm aware of that we could use to leverage for a bridge. One is a fish habitat grant funding, and we are working on a project that receive funding on that. We won't be able to use that for Truman Bridge because it's not blocking fish passage at all that I can see. It just wouldn't be a selling thing on the application. Our other option is the STIP grant funding. They do have, provide some money for local road bridges. We are trying to apply for every year for our STIP grant funding, and we weren't successful last year. This year, I think we've put a really good applicant, or our finance department has done a really good job putting an application in. We've got a very good candidate that checks. We've got a very good candidate that checks all the boxes. Up just east of Iron River Fire Hall, there's a bridge on six forty there that it's got a nice low structural condition rating. It's got a good traffic count, industry traffic, has even access for emergency vehicles. And so I'm really hopeful that we're able to, uh, we haven't heard back from the province on that on yet, but that we're gonna get some grant money for that one. Truman Bridge, I guess we haven't picked project or projects to apply for grant funding for this upcoming year. November thirtieth will be our deadline, so finance and I will be having a further conversation on which projects to pick to go after. Truman Bridge definitely would be swinging for the fences on. I mean, we'd be talking six million dollars in STIP grant funding. But, uh, something to be aware of is I had a look at the successful list of STIP grant-funded projects from two thousand and twenty-four. And the highest grant money sold out was four point eight million dollars. This would be a six million, so it would be higher than anything else. The other issue we're gonna run into, and I'm starting to realize as I get more into this grant funding, is with the STIP grant fund, they're really looking at what's called a structural condition rating, which is something that comes over, it's a number that comes out of the bridge inspection report. And when I did have a look, there were seventy-two projects that were funded in two thousand and twenty-four under the STIP grant across the province. And that rating for, I didn't check them all, but I did check a number of them. They all see, when I looked in the bridge database, or the provincial bridge database, they all had a bridge structural condition rating of thirty-three or less, which is bad. I, I mean, that is a bad condition bridge. It's really, and the problem with Truman, we're gonna run into, is Truman is currently even with the damages sitting at forty-four, which means it's higher than those projects I looked at. Whether that's gonna be an issue, it's quite possibly going to be an issue with using Truman as our candidate. I know when I do look at that provincial database, I had assorted all the, all the bridges by the SCR. There's currently over one thousand six hundred bridges in that provincial database that had a SCR rating of thirty-three or less. And just to keep in mind, in, in two thousand and twenty-four, they funded seventy-two projects. So there is huge amount of competition, a big and growing need for that funding, a lot of competition. I'm hopeful that we can get some money for the six forty bridge that we've applied for this year, but there's no, I wouldn't rely on that money. I think it is a very small drop in the bucket of what's going to be needed here. All right, that's it. Thank you for being patient with me. Are there any questions?
Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is for you or for Brian, but we have road use agreements, I think, with people that are using our industry, using the roads. They're supposed to be protecting the roads, and I'm just wondering if we had road use agreements in place there? And if, if, like, how come this got missed and we have sustained some significant damages? And apparently don't know who it is, or can't, can't trace it down to anyone.
Okay, through the reef to Counselor Crick, yeah, we do have road use agreements. We had some for this location, but further to that, whenever we're doing road use agreements, we loop Todd in, and we look at the route, and then he gives us some, uh, background on whether the bridge that they're gonna be crossing is suitable for what they're gonna be, you know, wanting it for. If it's not, then we steer them in a different direction. So, yeah, we're monitoring where, where truck traffic is going and, and what bridges they are crossing.
So did we, did we have any road use agreements with the logging company guys on this one?
No.
So someone used it without an agreement and damaged the bridge?
That is correct.
And then I guess my other comment was, after seeing the first picture with all the logs there, it would have been nice if we could have, you know, cut the stumps off. Few of them went and matched them to the trees and found where they were coming from.
Is it gonna have a little of a forensics or not?
Yeah, so.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, Josh, there's no, not too many locals in our area haul logs like that. So this wasn't a local truck that, you know, the, the ones that I haul with anyway. Because most of us, we haul long logs, these are cut-to-length logs, so this is going to a mill or something, right? And this guy obviously had to be lost because the local guys in our area wouldn't, would never go down that road to go that way. They'd always go over eight eighty-one. So this is a short wood, so that, that wood was like thirty-six, thirty-six-foot wood or whatever. So that's on a king B or, or it can be on a, just a straight, like a super B or, not a super B, but a hay, we call them a hay rack, where they just individually put rows of, they're, they're cut to length, right? So as you can see in the picture, they're all cut to length, they're not tree-length trees. They, they've been processed in the bush and loaded. So this guy couldn't have been from around here. That's just my opinion, though. If he was coming from the south going north, well, I could, you know, they're logging all up there, but he's going from the north-south, it doesn't make sense. Who would go that way?
Did you pass that information on to the R C P?
Oh, I passed it on to whoever here, yeah. So if there are no other questions, I can, yeah, sorry, Counselor Slipchuk, I didn't look down. Go ahead.
Okay, so the, uh, we're looking at span bridge. What's the, what's other options do we have? Can we put a concrete bridge? Because like, you know, I drive Nordic and I see them putting big concrete culverts in there. Like, I can't see, what would the cost be versus a span bridge?
They're all expensive.
Yeah.
The, uh, it really depends on the situation. There are times where culverts are more appropriate. There are times where, I, I know if you talk concrete girders versus steel girders, it really is largely dependent on cost. There's times where steel's cheaper, and there's times where concrete's cheaper, and we'll usually just end up picking the same one that ha, or the cheapest one that has the same lifespan. With the culverts, I know that is something our consultant does look at whenever we do replace a bridge or a bridge culvert structure. It's some, sometimes the same thing goes back in. There's other times where it makes more sense to switch. And I know some of the benefits of a bridge, as bridges last seventy, or they're targeted to last seventy-five years, where they're still targeting fifty years on the culvert, so there supposedly should be a, a longer lifespan on the bridges. It's much easier for us to stay within the road right-of-way with a bridge than it is with a culvert. One big issue that we're running to, into with a lot of the old culverts is because they're so low down on the embankment, they're, we're finding a number of them are encroaching on private property, and it's creating some real issues, uh, land issues. It's fine when you have the landowner who is supportive of us fixing or replacing the culvert, and they're willing to give us permission to work there. We have run into the situation where those are sticking way out, and we just aren't able to get permission from the landowner to do work, and it's kind of put us in limbo a little bit. Yet, the culverts, I know in my experience, I've had more issues with culverts, stability issues, just the change in shape when they're not supposed to changing shape. I, I tend to have more confidence in the bridge structures. I just see less problems with them. But it is something, from a cost standpoint, assuming you're in a situation where you could do either or, I would guess you're probably, a culvert's usually running at about eighty to ninety percent the cost of a bridge. So even though it's cheaper, once you take in the fact that a la, a bridge lasts longer, there's not a whole lot of difference, because when we're talking culverts, we're talking the big engineered culverts, not the little culvert, cheap culverts that our crews often bury, so.
Okay, so another question, you mentioned CR thirty-three, and this one's now CR forty-four. So that's worse than a thirty-three?
Uh, yeah, uh, forty-four is better than, because what they do is when a bridge inspector does, under the Alberta transportation system, they will give all the elements a one to nine rating, with one being basically emergency fall down, nine is brand new. And so what they're gonna do is they're gonna give a one to nine rating on the superstructure, a one to nine rating on the substructure. They're going to take and add those two numbers together, multiply by eighteen, or, no, divide by eighteen, multiply by a hundred. And that gives you your bridge condition, or your, your structural condition rating. And all it is, is this very high-level, one to a hundred rating for the bridge. Mathematically, it's actually impossible to reach anything lower than ten, and eleven is extremely improbable. Most of them, you're gonna see at least twenty-two or higher. We do have, uh, a number of structures, of course, that keep dropping in rating as the bridge is totally deteriorate. I'm not a big fan of the number. It tends to be one-dimensional, and it doesn't look at a lot of stuff. I know it's, it's a shame to say that when we talk about Truman Bridge being a candidate because of a SCR rating, the fact that it's a forty-four is gonna really hurt it. And yet, going up Seabert Lake Road, there is a, a deep culvert in there, which is just like grant funding gold because it's a, it's one where it keeps getting plugged up, and our crew is kind of wrecked up the top end of it, or the inlet of it. And there's usually so much water the, inside of it that the inspector can't see inside of it, so all he rates is that mushed-up end. And, and, but as soon as you've rated, graded an inspection report and decided the SCR number, it comes up with a nice juicy twenty-two on it, which means that if you put it on some list of grant funding handmaids in front of an administrator at the province, it's got far more likelihood to get picked than the one Truman, which probably has more legitimate case, that it, that would be a good investment of, of money. So, but the systems are what they are, and so we just do that. The shame about that Seabert Lake culvert assault will walk in fish passage, so we're not even sure which grant funding to go after, maybe both, but.
Okay, so the forty-four number, that's prior to the damage?
Nope, that's after the damage.
It's after the damage?
It was around fifty before the damage, or slightly over fifty before the damage.
So this bridge versus last, uh, council made, we approved the bridge, get replaced, took it out, budget to move forward on it. It affects residents, but this one has a bigger effect on the public, doesn't it? We, our industry is a big player in this?
Yeah, it's much higher, I, I would say that the industry is a much more interested party in this one. The detour is a whole lot longer on this one, too. I mean, that one, we talked about, one of the reasons it got flagged for as a possible closure candidate. And of course, uh, that was just, is, it was a fairly short detour to drive around it, where this one is nasty. I mean, this is, it, it's a long haul to get over to eighty-one and back again, so.
So, yeah, you mentioned some things there, like silage haul and all that. So this is gonna be a big, huge economic cost to the users if we, if we just leave it as is?
Yep, I mean, bridges are such, that they're such long lifespan things that people don't really realize sometimes the inefficiencies that they're dealing with. They'll drive a forty-five-minute drive for ten years, not even realizing that if you build a bridge there for a hundred people, driving a twenty-minute drive, there's quite a bit of cost savings in, in both the vehicle wear and tear and operating costs and people's time. And you get a, a lot of working people out on those roadways, and they're paid decent wages by the hour, and, uh, cost to companies, and having these people driving and travel time as opposed to, as opposed to working on the sites. It's a, it's an inefficiency that people just tend to deal with, where you get an old bridge, and especially when you do get a downgrade like's happened on this one, where there's less service now that we're providing on it. People will really notice the, I, I guess you have different stages. I mean, we've lost the ability to carry, uh, kind of those medium-sized vehicles, and we're down to real light vehicles. And if we do have a problem with this bridge to a point where we aren't able to keep it open anymore, it, uh, there, there, from what I've heard described to me, there are some significant economic cost impacts there.
Okay, so if we went with option two and went repaired it, would we be able to get insurance on it, or what could we do to see?
No, it's, we, we don't have, of course, because that was a hit-and-run, and they did not leave the insurance information. We don't have the culprit's information, uh, insurance paying for it. Our own insurance, uh.
No, what I meant was, can we, once we do the repairs, can we put, ensure, MD insure, insure that bridge? At that point, is it too old?
I have never heard of bridges or roads being insured for that. I know we have them for liability, but.
So through the reef to Counselor Slipchuk, I can, I can talk about that a little bit. We talked with our, the lady that does insurance with, with the MD. She had put a call into RMA, our insurance providers, and they said that there's no municipalities that are insuring any bridges at all. If we did get bridge insurance, they don't even know what a quote would be for premium. They're looking into it, but nobody ensures bridges, probably because, you know, we don't own the bridges. We'll have to pay for them, but we don't have, we don't all have any ownership on them. So it might even be, it might be difficult, if not impossible, to get insurance on them, being as that we don't own the bridges. So at this point in time, there is no, there's no precedent, there's no history on anybody having any insurance on any bridges, roads, those kind of structures at all?
Well, according to the provincial government, we own them now because we have to pay for them. So I, I will argue that. So we go forward with this repair, because you'd still have that overhead, you're limited for height. And a guy wanna, we wanna see, try to, we'd have to have some protection. Could we set cameras up? Like, you can get trail cams, can't we? Have set cameras up there and be able to?
Through, through the reef, yeah, absolutely. We can do some kind of security measure at that. But if we're looking at four point, what was that, four point seven meters or something?
That's pretty high.
Industry, industry traffic, if we're looking, you know, to, to accommodate some industrial traffic on there, they would likely be underneath that, that four point seven anyway. This was, you know, uh, having a load like that, logs, that kind of thing, maybe some big equipment, a track hoe or track excavator, that kind of thing, that would likely have to go around of a four point seven meter bridge. But for the most part, the, the industry traffic that we have, gravel trucks or, or, you know, tankers, that kind of thing, would likely be underneath it, so I don't think that would be too much of a concern.
Yeah, I, well, if it happened once, it can happen again.
True enough, yeah.
I'd like to see something like, the cameras are cheap now.
Almost fifteen feet, though, Donnie, that's, that's high. It's, it's got a lot of clearance.
Yeah, but it was, it happened.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to say, I gotta, I was wrong when I was making my assessment. I blew up my picture on my screen. This is definitely a hay rack, and this is definitely, it looks like, like firewood to me. Because the way I can tell is that they're, they're all what we call real small spruce. So this is a load of firewood going somewhere, if I, this isn't logs. And what they did on that hay rack, it is probably light and small, so they piled it to the roof. And what happens is those, those trees are on backwards, and they, they must have went through the roof first. Of the bridge is what I can see now, because I'm counting six tree-length little scrappy logs that went through the, through the roof or the ceiling of that bridge.
So with your comment there, that's why I'd like to see us put another statement in the paper and our, on our next row review, asking for information regarding this issue and putting in there what it's gonna cost taxpayers, how much it's cost our community because of this incident. Because I believe somebody bought that load of wood, and it was somebody that didn't know the bridge. And maybe the person that bought the wood just comes to read this, but it's worth to check, uh, to, to, to try and see if we can get that.
You can ask to see who got a half a load of wood and paid full price?
No, you buy, buy a truckload, like, I know my brother, I buy a couple every, every two years.
It's pretty, it's pretty scrappy wood, if you really look at it. I'm just taking a really good look at it now, and it's all little, like, you can't really make a saw log out of any of that. So it's all, it's all just firewood.
Because sometimes the guys will get a, get, buy a piece of some wood off a lease, but they'll go and find their own hauler to haul it. You know? So.
Yeah, they just, they just chucked it on, like, it's not.
So back to this point, like, we're going back to seven hundred fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars, six months to repair and get it back to the high weight there. I think this is something we have to move forward on. We moved forward quickly on a little bridge that didn't affect us, have as big an effect. We have a bigger taxpayers' base here that, that utilizes this bridge. And I think we should get this one repaired and then be prepared and look forward for, to making a new route, because that road could, should be changed as well as a new bridge in place. But it gives us a little more time than, but we can't expect industry to have to take big detours for two and a half years, three years, like.
Is there a lot of oil that goes across that road? If they come out of the jungle, don't they go to fifty-five mostly?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is currently on this bridge, they're just having their operators and like pickup trucks and that going back and forth.
Lots of pressure trucks, too, and that service trucks.
They did say that if we did replace this bridge with it, it would be. They did say that if we did replace this bridge with it, it would be be a big benefit for them that they would be able to haul fluids across this bridge, but they're not able to currently now. No.
Yeah, they don't haul no no crude oil across there at all. I don't think it was rated for it before. And then it's a tough hill to make because you're at a dead, you're going fifteen, twenty kilometers an hour, and then you gotta turn left and bark up a hill like, you know.
It's not a real great alignment right now.
If it was straightened out and you came off the top of the hill from Truman, you know, then you're gonna make the hill no problem. But it's just that's impossible kind of a, you know, in the summer months, no problem, but winter would be a different problem there.
So what's left in our bridge fund if we went? Could we we have enough money in our bridge fund to go forward with this repair?
I believe through the reef to Counsel Slipcheck's question there, I believe we had about eight million in there and then we took out one point seven for the for that bridge. So we're into six million.
Eight million left there.
Six point eight is is what we roughly.
Have remaining after the one point seven is out?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So around six, six and change is what's in the bridge file or bridge fund reserves today.
Yeah. And and number two was what one point some million to fix this bridge? I can't remember.
Seven hundred fifty.
Seven hundred fifty?
Eight hundred and six months.
Yes, sorry. Just looking at the things. Go ahead.
No, I I agree with Donnie. I I think, you know, estimated ten years, maybe it's twenty, but whatever, we've still got a long life out of it if we repair it. And so because I I kinda thought, you know, option six, we should have already been doing that anyway. Like if if it was now today, there was never a bridge there, we wanted to put in a bridge, where would we put it? You know, maybe maybe that's where we'd put it off four eighty-five, but we wouldn't have all the spans in it. So.
Well, the one benefit of forty-five is we have it paved all the way to the top of the hill from the south. And then we have it paved all the way to the jungle entrance there coming off of Highway fifty-five. So it is a nice paved road all the way from the, you know, six sixty.
So I think it's a good it's probably a good spot. It just needs to be like I I don't wouldn't want to put in a bunch of money right now and then, you know, make it the way we think it should be without really doing consultation with everybody. And so I think this is a good fix for now.
What is your recommendation?
Okay, so we can continue here. So reference to the strategic plan is goal number two, enhance safety in the community with the objective being transportation infrastructure network safety. Reference to the provincial or federal legislation, the MGA sections one sixteen, eighteen, and five thirty-two. The sources of funding, so funding could come from the bridge reserves, grant funding, which is not guaranteed, or debenture debt. So we could, you know, take a debenture out for a number of years for to fund whatever option council decides on. Communication would be through the council minutes posted on the MD website and public notice if required. So administration's recommended action is that council directs administration to bring the repair and construction options for Bridge File seven two five one five back to the twenty twenty-six budget deliberations for consideration. That was our that would have been our recommendation, not not knowing what what direction council would want to go at this point.
Okay, Counsel Slipcheck?
Yeah, so then bring it back to twenty-six budget. That's October.
Yep.
So we're waiting with a three month, three ton restriction.
This one is five.
Five tons, sorry.
Yep.
I I believe we should go forward with the repairs and take it out of the bridge fund. I'm gonna go for option. I'm gonna make a motion that we pick option two and take it out of the bridge fund as well as that we put information, request for information, highlighting the bridge damage in the paper and also in our next rural review that comes out. And maybe we could even offer a reward. I don't know. For information leading forward. Money seems to talk.
I will not admit to it.
Sounds like a mission right there.
Yeah.
Okay, bear.
I don't haul trees backwards.
Do you think it's at all possible that someone did that without knowing?
No, because they went back and cleaned it up. Well, we're not we're not sure if they cleaned it up or somebody else cleaned it up.
Like you would feel that in your truck, eh?
I'll bet you.
That ripped all your lines off.
Like he must have been going though, right? Like.
You're you're tied down like we use ropes now. So you're tied all down. So it would it would have snapped all your ropes and like or or cables, whatever they use. I don't know. Some guys use cables, some guys use ropes, right?
You guys tie those down?
Yeah, it's all tied down. There'd be probably five on that load. So they had to snap them. Okay, that's do you want to make another motion after, Donnie, for the rest of what you had there?
Do we need to make do we need to make motion for information for the rural review and all that? And maybe we should discuss about option reward.
Okay, why don't we do this first and then we can have a all right. You read it? You're good with that? All right. Thank you, Counsel Slipcheck, for making this motion that council directs administration to proceed with repairs Bridge File seven two five one five by means of option two as presented to repair the bridge to pre collision conditions at the maximum cost of eight hundred thousand to be funded by the Bridge Reserve Fund. Any discussion? Counsel Crick?
Thank you. Yeah, I would rather go with option one on this one and bring it and put it in the budget for twenty twenty-six. The bridge isn't completely closed. It's still a five ton weight limit. I think we heard there was five, seven, or nine. I can't remember the number, but it was less than ten trucks per day. So it's not not a huge huge amount of trucks having to use eighty-one, which is a provincial highway. So I'm not opposed to fixing this or but I just think it'd be even better to put it in the budget for next year. So I'll be voting in opposition.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Slipcheck.
Yeah, ten trucks a day, but there's days there during silage agriculture work. Wasn't it said that three hundred plus load?
That was the one resident that did identify that on a good year they would have. Now, that was based on a new bridge. That would be the benefit of a new bridge because of course a new bridge can carry a modern truckload and carry a full load there. Currently, they identified that before the damage, they could haul an empty silage truck across the bridge. Now they can haul no silage trucks across the bridge, but they were talking on a good year that there were about three hundred loads that needed to be hauled.
So currently, they haven't been using the bridge anyway, right at this moment?
For for empty up until.
Yeah. Okay, Counsel Slipcheck again?
And you mentioned about if we leave it as it is, you did with your little ruler there where it can spring out. We have nobody has no idea how long that will last before it starts affecting the bridge. Like it could be six months, could be one year.
It's hard to say. If if you ask me that same question in five years, and I've spent five years watching it do nothing, I'm a lot more confident that it's gonna do nothing going forward at that point. Right now, we're kind of waiting and seeing. We'll have the the consultant inspector come once a year and check it. And I'm gonna probably do some informal checks on it, just to kind of eyeball those those trust lines interim between those, just to be able to sleep at night.
Well, I I still go with option two. I don't want to see people driving across damaged bridges.
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Reeves Carson.
So if you left it as is, was there any chance that after a year or two years that it could be rerated to where it was before based off of a couple of years of history?
No, no, if we don't do any work, it's five ton maximum and that's best case.
I think a big thing on that bridge is right now, it's almost a dry riverbed with, you know, it's frozen. But if we went back to like four years ago when that flood come through, those bridges were singing. Like I remember I drove up with a CDO to the Lassard Bridge and they are moving rocks at that time to save the bridge there because there was that much pressure. They're literally dumping great big boulders and they had a trackle putting the boulders along the edges of the bridge to hold it there because it was washing away. So you get that same bridge on a it might not be the same roar as the Sandy and the Beaver together, but there's a lot more pressure when there's a big flood happening. So it doesn't happen every year, but can't say it'd be a lot more pressure on the bridge at that time. I'm sure of it. I see the benefit of fixing it right now, but I'd like everyone's opinion. We could leave it for a week and wait till Mike and Ben are here, too, to discuss it. But they're not here. But it's up to you guys. Yeah, Counsel Swagert?
No, I think I already did say I'm in favor of putting that money into it to repair it and then look at it. Because it, like I said, once we've done that, it's probably gonna last ten or twenty years. And then there's lots of time kind of to look at where that bridge should go in the future. So I'm in favor.
Okay. Josh, you have anything else or here?
I don't know. I'm not in favor. I guess I'm, like I said earlier, I'm not opposed to fixing it. I just thought it'd be better to wait, put it in the budget and it's open. I'd rather wait and discuss when everyone's here, but they're not here and we gotta do business without them. So I'll vote on it and carry on.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Okay, on to nine point four point two.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reeve. This is for the.
Excuse me for one second. Go ahead, Counsel Crick.
Were we gonna have a discussion after that motion about possibly a reward or advertising to try and find out who did it so that we can save ourselves eight hundred thousand hours?
Yeah, we can. Sorry about that, Mr. Beschakel. What would you like to do? Yes, Counsel Slipcheck?
I'd like to maybe offer a five thousand dollar reward that leads to conviction.
Yeah. Are we allowed to offer rewards? I don't know. I've never had that before.
I don't have to press the M G.
Okay. Can we check that out and do this at the at the later part of the meeting?
Yeah. I didn't put in the rural review and also the paper ads, looking for information.
Okay, we'll discuss that later on in the meeting. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Beschakel. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reeve. This is for the Cold Lake Regional Utility Services Commission Fee Increase for Septic Haulers. Administration was made aware on January six, twenty twenty-five, that the that the Cold Lake Regional Utility Services Commission, at their December four, twenty twenty-four meeting, approved service fee increases to its customers. And that's in Appendix A, effective February one, twenty twenty-five. One of the rate increases was for septic haulers. This rate went from seventy dollars a load in twenty twenty-four to one hundred dollars a load for twenty twenty-five. This is an increase of forty-two point eight six percent. Council approved a line item in the twenty twenty-five operating budget for a subsidization payment to Bonneville, the town, in an effort for to keep dumping fees at the town sewage facility at sixty dollars per load. As the commission has raised their fees to a hundred dollars a load and council has already established a budget to subsidize rates in Bonneville to sixty dollars a load, this council wished to extend the offer to the commission to have fees remain at sixty dollars a load. Administration has received information from the commission regarding the amount of trucks dumping at their facility. In twenty twenty-three, we had one thousand one hundred and eleven loads dumped, twenty twenty-four, one thousand ninety-one loads. And note that all loads received were were from the MD. However, it's estimated it's estimated that ninety percent of them came from MD residences. Calculating some preliminary numbers to have the cost fees remain at sixty dollars per load for residents dumping at the commissioned facility, this would be an additional MD cost of forty-four thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five, and that's an average of eleven hundred loads per year times forty dollars per load. The cost and source of funding for this, so the remaining funds available from the twenty twenty-five operating budget for Bonneville subsidy is approximately thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Rate changes will be communicated via the MD website. And it's council's it's administration's recommendation, the council directs administration to draft an agreement with the Cold Lake Regional Utility Service Commission to have the septic dumping fees remain at sixty dollars per load for the MD residents and bring a draft agreement back to the back to a future meeting of council for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Beschakel. Someone like to make a motion? Counsel Swagert? I'm sorry. I had the wrong thing. Counsel Swagert?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, I'd I'm in favor of option one. We all got we all got the letter, I think, from a local Crane Lake resident who's not so he's a little upset because the fees have gone up. And and so it's, I guess, a small price to pay for the MD. Other than that, we'd have to build our own sewage system and support the residents. So we've done it for for Bonneville. I guess we're gonna hopefully do it for Cold Lake.
All right. So that's your motion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Swagert, for making this motion that council directs administration to draft an agreement with the Cold Lake Regional Utility Services Commissions to have septic dumping fees remain at sixty dollars a load for the MD of Bonneville residents and bring the draft agreement back to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion? Counsel Crick, then Counsel Slipcheck?
Yeah, when we initially did this, it was because there was a discrepancy between the two, the Cold Lake and the Bonneville ones. We subsidized the Bonneville. Yeah, we subsidized residents that were dumping in Bonneville in the Bonneville lagoon. Didn't bring it on par with the price of the Cold Lake one. Now the Cold Lake ones put their prices prices up. So now we're subsidizing both. So I just wonder where it's gonna end. I had one other question, but I can't think of it off the top of my head here, too. It'll come back.
When you think of it, just hit the button. Counsel Slipcheck?
Yeah, my question was, okay, we did it for sixty dollars a load, but everything's gone up since last year. Again, it keeps going up. Shouldn't maybe if we're gonna do this, shouldn't we change that to maybe seventy dollars that they pay up to the residents? That's why I'm just throwing that out there for everybody else's thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Swagert?
Yeah, just to comment on their costs did go up in Cold Lake because they're they've invested like thirty million dollars into septic treatment facility, which is under construction. So again, like it's a small price to pay for us to help our residents unless we're gonna invest thirty million dollars in a sewage facility somewhere. So I think for now, we kind of are lucky that we can have Bonneville and Cold Lake open to our residents. But, you know, I think it's good to support it.
Thank you, Counsel Crick, then then Deputy Reeves Carson.
Okay. Yeah, I thought the other thing I was gonna ask was, is this agreement, does this be a one year agreement or is it multiple years? Or and the one we have with the town of Bonneville, is that a one year agreement or is that a do we just renew it every year? What's the timeframe on those agreements?
Through the reef to Counsel Crick and to all of council, the agreement that we have with Bonneville right now is we're gonna look at it in the beginning of of the year. We are going to reassess the fees by, I believe that was March or April of every year. This gives them a time to close their books, find out exactly what the costs were, give them to us, and then we can we can adjust the rates accordingly. I would suggest that we do the same thing with with Cold Lake, have it on an annual basis. You know, again, along the same lines as we do with with Bonneville. Sorry, I said Cold Lake, I meant the commission. It's it's the commission that is that we're dealing with, not the not the city.
Well, I'd be okay with the motion, the way it is written, with the amendment, adjusting it to say seventy dollars for a one year, one year term. And then it can be revisited after that. If I don't know if you're okay with that being friendly amendment, then we'll go do it that way.
Through, sorry, through the through the reef, are you suggesting that we that I do the same with Bonneville? Because we at the beginning of this, we wanted to keep things even. So my agreement with with Bonneville is for a year, we're going to we're gonna relook at this in at the end of twenty twenty-five. I would I respect your motion, but I would I would suggest that in order to keep things the same, so we don't have to open up Bonneville's agreement for the remainder of the year, that we just keep it at the at the same. And then we look at them both. The difference of of ten dollars a year, or sorry, ten dollars per load over a thousand loads, isn't really going to amount to a whole bunch if we.
It'll be about a pro- It'll be about a, approximately a twenty thousand dollar savings if you add both of them in, if they're both around the same amount of dump.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right. I have, I have, oh, sorry. Are you finished?
Well, I guess I'd kinda made an amendment here, but it, I can see the, the point that it's, if we go with seventy, then it's not gonna work out. So I think I'll just drop the amendment altogether.
We have Deputy Reeve and then, uh.
So just to refresh my memory, it's, it's, so what do we pay for the Cold Lake right now? Sixty?
I thought it was fifty.
Through the, through the Reeve to Counselor Skarson, uh, they were charging us for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. They were charging us sixty dollars per load. Uh, their fees changed in twenty twenty four to seventy dollars a load. However, they honored the sixty dollar per load uh, for the M D residents over twenty twenty four. This rate change goes, so theoretically it's from six, for the rate pairs themselves, it's from sixty to a hundred. Uh, but for the purposes of their feat, fee schedule, it went from seventy to a hundred. They just honored the, the sixty dollars for twenty twenty four.
In, and Bonneville's is sixty.
Correct.
Right? But they, so they really need to know, you really need to set that rate at the beginning of the year, not at the end, right?
Through the, through the chair, yeah, that's exactly it. But that's why we.
Well, just sorry, my point is, is that if it's, if, if we're saying we pay sixty, then we pay sixty. And if they wanna raise it to a thousand dollars, then they charge the difference to the haulers, right? Because you get a number at the end of the year and then we pay, right? Is that how it works right now?
That's correct.
So then if you just got that number and you said, okay, here's sixty bucks for each of those loads, right? If you wanna charge more to the haulers coming in, then that's, that's not on us.
Actually, uh, sorry, let me back up here a little bit, uh, through the Reeve. Uh, we made a deal with, uh, with the, uh, with Bonneville based on the average number of loads. We cut them a check for X amount of dollars, a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five thousand or a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
At the beginning of the year, and then they don't charge the residents or the hauler or, or the M D or anything more.
They would, they'd know these guys are coming in.
Correct.
They could say, okay, now there's a ten dollar charge and we're paying sixty and they're, and the residents paying ten.
Correct.
We don't have to change anything on our end, right?
That, that's, that's correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I have Counselor Swagerd.
Unfortunately, we're not talking dollar for dollar for Cold Lake and Bonneville because they don't charge. It's not just a flat fee. In, in Cold Lake, it's a flat fee. Now it's a hundred bucks a load. But Bonneville's always charged so much per load and then they charge to, to dump, they charge. And then they charge a, a cubic meter fee. So if you got ten cubes, they charge, I think it was like fourteen bucks per cube on top of that. So they're not, they're not the same. We're not.
Through the chair, uh, to Counselor Swagerd, uh, that was what their billing structure was prior to the agreement that we made with them. After the agreement, it's just a flat rate of, uh, of sixty dollars that they're charging. They don't charge per cubic meter for the residents anymore. Uh, we worked out an agreement where based on an average load of X amount of cubic meters, plus the, the, the fee of dumping, uh, that came out to, we, we worked it out to sixty dollars per load and that's what they're charging.
Okay. Thanks. That was, that's new to me. Cause they.
That was it. That was in the agreement that we.
Thank you, Counselor Crick.
Okay. I'm probably gonna ask something that just went, got over. So we don't actually pay sixty dollars per load for those stuff that go into Bonneville. We just subsidized to bring it down to sixty dollars on average per load. Is that correct?
That is, that's correct. We're, we're paying sixty dollars per load to, so that everybody is paying the same amount for, uh, for dumping.
Right.
We're, we're, we're paying the little bit above sixty, whatever it is.
Yeah. Cause it could have been ninety or a hundred and ten or whatever we're paying to bring it down to an average of sixty.
And that's throughout the M D? Okay. Any other?
So again, I just, I don't really understand why an increase in Cold Lake or Bonneville affects us. Right? Cause our, our agreement says we're paying sixty bucks a load. If they're gonna increase that, it doesn't affect anything that we've done.
So through, through the Reeves, uh, you're correct. We're when we're paying that, uh, that amount for the, uh, uh, to subsidize, that is to get it down. And maybe I wasn't clear, it's to get it down to sixty dollars per load.
So then is it?
So.
Is, does haulers right now paying any, like, do they pay anything when they go to?
They're paying sixty dollars per load. That's what the, that's what the fee to the resident is. They're getting a bill for sixty dollars. We're paying the additional cost over top of the sixty dollars. And I apologize if I, if it came across wrong, that we're paying, if it's a hundred dollars that, uh, that Bonneville is charging, let's just use that as a round number. We're paying the forty dollars per load to get it down to sixty, which matched what Cold Lake had.
Is that what we're doing?
Yes. That's what we're doing. And, and I apologize if it did, if, if my explanation was a little convoluted.
Why don't we just say we're paying sixty dollars a load no matter where it goes and the residents on the hook for the difference?
The council's decision at the time was to pay the difference to get it to sixty dollars for every resident. That's why we came up with this, this amount of money and, and the formula that we owe, uh, uh, Bonneville this amount of money per year in order to get it down to sixty dollars per load. That is what, uh, that's what the formula is based on. This would be the exact same thing. So all M D residents pay sixty dollars a load to dump a load. We pay whatever is additional. In this case, it would be forty dollars a load because they're charging a total of a hundred per load.
I see.
So that, that's, we're paying the difference from sixty to whatever it is that the, that the, uh, the town or the commission would be charging.
So then, um, residents, so if it went to Cold Lake before, we were just paying ten bucks a load?
Uh, we were paying zero dollars. Cause they, they, they had, they set their rate for sixty dollars for, uh, for, uh, M D residents. And.
Was it, was it seventy dollars a load last year?
I, yeah, I was sorry. I was explaining that, uh, a couple of minutes ago where they did increase it to seventy. However, I spoke with their administration and they said they were gonna honor, they were gonna honor the sixty dollars per load that they had, that they gave us before.
So the hundred dollars a load that they wanna go to is still less than Bonneville's?
Uh, it would be pretty equal. I'd have to do the math again, but it would, yeah, it would be, it would be similar. I, I don't recall exactly what, uh, again, I could do, check the math on, on how, what the formula was for us to get to, uh, uh, what we owed Bonneville, uh, for the difference. But, uh, yeah, it was.
Well, at the end of the day, we just had a number in our budget, right? It was a hundred and
Fifty.
Fifty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
So I mean, once it's there, it's gone kind of thing. So do we have to reconcile every month or how is that gonna work?
Uh, through the chair, no. Like I was saying before, that, uh, we just take an average of what they had in the previous year. Take that average, we multiply that by whatever the difference is, give, cut them a check for that amount. And again, at this year with, uh, with Bonneville, it was a hundred and twen, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand or a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars or something to that effect. That's what we owed them based on last year's numbers, average, multiplied that by, uh, uh, by what we owed and, and cut them a check for it.
Forty of the loads went?
Yes.
Forty-four thousand to, okay.
So.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
I don't, I just don't understand what, like, why would they have any incentive to agree to this at all?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Skarson, uh, or Deputy Reeves Carson, um, either way, they're gonna get their, their hundred dollars a load. They'd get sixty from a resident and then forty from the M D. They'd still, they wouldn't be out any money, uh, at the end of the day. We would just be subsidizing the difference between sixty and, and the hundred. Did that answer your question?
Not really. So I just don't understand it. It says septic fees remain at sixty dollars a load for M D residents. So then we're negotiating to pay from ten dollars to forty dollars now.
Uh, again, through the, through the Reeve, we didn't pay anything to, to the commission, not even the ten dollars, cause they held it at sixty dollars for us. So we would now be negotiating what the difference is going to be. Maybe they're gonna give us a better deal than a hundred, but that's what their rate schedule says. Uh, and what we would have to do is just talk with them to see, is it gonna be on an actual load count? Or is it going to be on an average load count like we do with, uh, with Bonneville here? Take an average of X amount of loads, multiply that by forty bucks. Uh, again, I looked at here on eleven hundred loads on average. Write them a check for forty-four thousand dollars. They keep all the fees back at sixty dollars and we, everybody goes on about doing their business.
Do we have anyone that sits on that commission?
Uh, through the chair, yep. Counselor, uh, Counselor Swagerd.
Do you accept?
All right. That motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Bespockal.
Uh, and again, we'll, uh, we'll draft this agreement. We'll come back with, uh, with it. And then if there's any, cause right now there's only thirty-seven thousand five hundred remaining in the budget. Uh, if we need some more money, we'll come back at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the budget for this year here, you mean?
Uh, through the chair, yeah. We have a twenty twenty five budget. Uh, we know how much we're, we're spending on, uh, on Bonneville. And, uh, this is what would be approximately what's remaining, uh, for, if we did this for the commission.
All right.
Thank you. Onto nine point five point one.
Hello?
Hi.
So, uh, today I just have the report for appointment of our twenty twenty five municipal election returning officer and substitute returning officer. So the twenty twenty five municipal election is on Monday, October twentieth, with nomination period now open as of January first until twelve o'clock noon on Monday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty five. In accordance with the Local Authorities' Election Act and Municipal Elections Bylaw Number One Eight Eight One, nomination forms are to be submitted to the returning officer for the election. Administration is seeking appointments of the returning officer and substitute returning officer for this election today. So as per the LAEA, council may appoint an R O for a municipal election and must appoint a substitute R O for the purposes of conducting the municipal election. Administration did start the recruitment process for hiring an external returning officer for the twenty twenty five municipal election in fall of two thousand twenty-four and was successful in finding a suitable candidate who was scheduled to start on Monday. However, unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances beyond their control, the successful candidate is no longer able to, to fulfill those returning officer duties at this time. Um, in order to proceed with the appointment of a returning officer for the municipality, administration is recommending that council proceeds with appointing, uh, myself, Stephanie Severin, as the returning officer and Charity Croker, the municipal legislative services coordinator, as the substitute returning officer for the twenty twenty five municipal election.
Thank you. Looking for a motion. Counselor Sutrick?
I'll make a motion for option one.
Thank you, Counselor Sutrick, for making this motion. The council appoints Stephanie Severin as a returning officer and Charity Croker as a substit, substitute returning officer for the municipal district of Bonneville, two thousand twenty five municipal election in accordance with the Local Authorities' Election Act, effective February third, two thousand twenty five. Any discussion on this motion?
Sorry, um, Mr. Reeve, my apologies. When I was updating this, I forgot to take out the effective. If council wishes, they certainly could keep the effective date to be Monday. However, we originally had that date there because that was the start date of the previously, um, hired person to fulfill the role. However, because Charity and I are both already municipal staff, if council wishes, that could be changed to effective immediately.
Are you okay with that motion? Okay. Everyone okay with that? Right on. Okay. All those in favor or? I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point five point two. Counselor Swagerd?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, it was, uh, some weeks ago I got, started getting calls from residents around Crane Lake about the concerns of, um, oil drilling under the lake. So GEAR Energy actually is up north of, very close, but north of Crane Lake. And, uh, residents around, some of them didn't get notification for whatever reasons. Um, but they're concerned and, and they're kinda reaching out to me to sort of help spearhead something. Uh, they've got a group out there who's working with the A E R. Uh, they were able to put in a bunch of statements of concerns to the A E R, so that slowed down the process of, uh, the drilling under the lake. But, um, there's some of the concerns from residents where, where that, like, M D owns like Crane Lake and a couple of the other lakes that are in that area that are actually connected through underground aquifers. And they're concerned, uh, and thinking that the M D should have some kind of concern toward it. And, and I kinda agreed. I, but I don't know. The M D never does really get involved in, um, I guess, oil and gas, cause that's kind of the bread and butter here. But, um, um, so I reached out to Scott Seer and, and asked him to look into Alberta Environment and Protected Areas and see if that part of the government would, um, kinda just step forward and make sure that everything's kinda done properly when they're drilling. Cause you're not, probably not gonna stop it, but they just wanna ensure that everything's mitigated correctly and, and, um, it shouldn't necessarily be up to all the citizens that live around the lake to try to protect the lake. So I'm not sure if there's any, uh, anything the M D could actually do. And, and we, I know we have environmentalists at the M D, but they're not involved in that sort of thing. So I'm not sure going forward if there's anything the M D ever wants to do to kinda show that we're, you know, at least concerned. So. It's just kinda my questions and comments and maybe somebody can comment.
Well, I'll comment. Um, right off the top, we had this at Ethel Lake the other day and then we found out they're just observation wells. So I don't know, like, uh, we're, I made some phone calls and they were just observing. Uh, so, uh, I don't know if they're actually, the people tell you they're drilling, but the others, they are, they are drilling there too, but they weren't really drilling. So, um, I, I don't, that I don't know. Um, so I'll put you back on. Uh, Counselor Sutrick?
Yeah, I was just gonna say like, uh, like if, if the issue is about drilling under a lake, I've drilled a lot of wells under lakes, drilled wells into the, under, in, under the ocean. And no effects, like that's been going on for lots of years. So like as to the groundwater and that, A E R, that's an A E R thing and provincial government thing on, uh, uh, issuing well licenses. I don't think that has something to do with us. Now, if they were gonna build a site like beside the, the lake and that, maybe we could, like, have some input, but other, about drilling a well under a lake, I, I can't see us having any input in that.
There, there also must be, uh, some wells from the, you know, Husky ain't that far from Crane Lake to the north either, right?
No, it's, uh.
It's ver, it's right there.
So I mean, they are, Mr. Reeve, they are, they are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, hit your button. Oh, wait. Go ahead.
GEAR is drilling, uh, very close to Crane Lake right now. They've got four web, web, well pads and, and so they're, they're drilling these wells. They, they, uh, what got kinda stopped right now because of the statements of concerns was their facility license. So they, you know, they can't then kinda cap the wells and start producing or whatever. But, um, yeah, so it's not just GEAR right now. It's, CNBC, CNRL also has a bunch of applications in to drill around and under Crane Lake. And I think there's Tucker and Hilda maybe also, but there's been work around Hilda. And, uh, people were concerned, but it's, I don't, I just think we shouldn't always leave it up to the residents to, you know, be, have to come up with scientists and kinda try to persuade the companies to put in extra casings or whatever, cause who knows, right? They, these folks don't know. And they kinda think the M D should have some kind of concern for the M D lakes. And I don't know. Guess we leave it up to the provincial government and the residents right now.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go, go ahead, Josh.
It's okay. I, I think we have, like, we have the Alberta Energy Regulator. They have a lot of really strict regulations for how any energy company can drill and produce anything, pipelines, wells, whatever. Um, I think there's probably wells underneath most of the lakes, if not all the lakes in the M D of Bonneville. There's, there's slanted wells going every which direction you can think of all over the place around here. And I agree with Counselor Sutrick that they're, they're doing improperly. There, there's not an issue. They drill wells in the. the ocean too, I mean, there has, there has been some issues in the ocean, but the ocean's still there, so I, I don't think we want as an MD to get into stepping in provincial territory trying to shut down and, and hinder and slow down industry in the area when we're trying to attract industry here and we want people to have good jobs in our area.
Okay, thank you for that information, appreciate it. On to ten.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, I'll just go quickly through a few of the items that are on your correspondence and information list, the first one is ten point two, it's a letter from Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprises, it is just a thank you for the conference that the MD hosted last September. Item number ten point six is an email from Lakeland Agricultural Research, Research Association and it's related to a farmer appreciation night invitation which is scheduled for February the seventh, cost is twenty dollars a person and so if council would like to go, we'll need to register for that. The next one is ten point seven, email from Rural Municipalities of Alberta related to an oil and gas taxes survey which is due for February tenth and I believe our assessment department will take care of that. Item number ten point eight is an email from Kinnisou Blizzard's Alpine Ski Team, Blizzard Blast Youth Ski Race Invitation, that event is scheduled for February eighth and ninth, both days start at nine AM, on the Saturday, they've arranged a flyby by the Royal Canadian Air Force at approximately two thirty, so council has been invited to attend that event. Ten point nine, an email from the Canadian Women's Heart Health Alliance, they're requesting a proclamation for Wear Red Canada Day, they would appreciate the proclamation, proclamation for February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And finally, item ten point ten, a letter from Alberta Forestry and Parks Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta, ORFIRA, and it is a letter from Minister Todd Lowen encouraging municipalities to take advantage of the grant program and ensure that we have good fire protection practices in our community.
Okay, thank you councillor Swiger.
Susan, do we need a, a motion for the Farmer's Appreciation Night in Glendon on the seventh? If we do, if, because I'm going, a few of us, a few of us are going. I'll make the motion, Mr. Reeve, if we need that, for that Farmer's Appreciation Night in Glendon?
Okay.
I don't think we did that yet.
Not that I know.
I, I don't believe so, Stephanie.
Go ahead, Steph.
Mr. Reeve, if there is a cost associated with attending, we do typically try to get a motion from council approving the expenditure, otherwise, yeah.
You know, there's a cost or not right now?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars? So how many tickets do you want to buy?
I'm not sure, who's go, I'm going, I'm taking my wife, Mike's going, I'm not sure who else.
Councillor Crick?
I've already, I think councillor Crick and myself have already signed up through the egg service board to go to that one.
So do you want to, just tickets for yourself?
Want to just make a motion that we'll buy tickets as, as needed or whatever and then if there's two of us go, that's fine.
Is that okay, kind of motion, or do you want to?
We usually have a number.
Ultimately, I, it would be up to finance, we, I think we usually try to get a dollar amount for auditing purposes, but I can't.
Okay, let's just, we only have looks, looks like two tickets, so let's do that for now and if somebody else wants, they can, they can phone, how's that sound?
Sure.
All right. Okay, you want to make that motion? Okay, thank you councillor Swiger for making this, the council approves the purchase of two tickets for Lakeland Agricultural Research, Lara, Farmer Appreciation Night, it costs twenty dollars per ticket to be funded from the two thousand twenty five council public relations budget. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, oh, sorry, councillor Subcik then, then.
Yeah, I'd like to, for ten point nine, to make sure on the next council meeting, February eleventh, that we proclaim.
Do we want to do that?
Wear Canada Day by the.
Do you want to do that today or is, next week would be fine?
Next council's okay, as long as for the third.
What's that?
Do that now.
I can do it now because I have it here.
Oh, okay, if you could.
Yep.
I think it'd be good to do.
I was just reading it over to, usually I, I.
And then I, I got one other, one other thing.
Time twisters usually.
Ten point ten, if, as our safety, people looking into these grants for, and looking into getting fire controlled burns areas in our, our rural areas there, subdivisions, fire guard, fire guard, that's the word I'm looking for.
Excuse me, through the Reeve, yes, we are, there's a free grant coming up for completion on the twenty fourth of February, so we're looking at that one. What we've been looking at doing is refreshing our wildlife mitigation strategy, we have a report that's coming up five years old now on mitigation strategies and we had commissioned that resulting from a grant about five years ago, so we're looking at refreshing that through the grant process and also one of the letters, the letter from the minister actually alluded to fire breaks, he's really in favor of large fire breaks, but he's talking about hundreds of, of meters in terms of fire breaks, not just a, a ten or twenty meter fire break. So my plan is to actually have a conversation with leadership on that tomorrow and see where we're, we're headed and then get some thoughts on that from council as well before we get too crazy mowing down forest.
Councillor Swiger?
Yeah, I read that too and I thought it was a little bit overkill, but I mean, but the problem is a huge fire break, you, you still get embers crossing those anyway, so it doesn't, doesn't really matter, but like smaller, I'm thinking of some spots in Ardmore where if you had smaller, just cuts through there that you could actually get equipment through if you needed to fight fires because there's a quarter section there that could, you know, I'm just waiting for it to burn up sometime and, and really no access, so.
Correct, yeah, and so that's one of the reasons why that strategy, why we're looking at refreshing it so that we can actually get a, an engineered professional opinion on where some of these fire breaks, if in fact we're going to go down that road where they should be, where they'll, we'll have best bang for buck, so before we start again looking at some major projects like that, I kind of wanted to refresh that strategy and make sure that we're, we're on the same page as what the experts say we should be on, so, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I cut you out there, go ahead, apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, I just received an update, apparently the Kinnisou Blizzard's Alpine Ski Team were unable to schedule a, a flyby that, that they wanted, so that will not be happening.
Okay, can I do that now, proclamation?
Obviously just getting the council motion first.
To do it, all right, can we have that up on the screen then? Who would like to make this motion? Thank you councillor Subcik for making the motion that council approves proclamation of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty five is Wear Red Canada Day in the municipal district of Bonneville, any discussion on this motion? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Wear Red Canada Day, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty five, whereas heart disease is the number one killer of women worldwide and the leading cause of premature death for Canadian women, a fact unknown to many women and their healthcare providers, and whereas the Canadian Women's Hearts Health Alliance is an organization of volunteer health professionals and patients working hard to improve a woman's heart health, and whereas Wear Red Canada Day is celebrated annually to raise awareness for all Canadians, but especially Canadian women to be mindful, curious and proactive in managing their heart health and wellness, and whereas as we want to see better prevention, diagnoses and care for fewer women dying prematurely from heart disease, therefore, I, the Reeve of the MD of Bonneville, do hereby proclaim February thirteenth, two thousand twenty five, Wear Red Canada Day in Bonneville, Alberta, Canada, thank you.
Glad you didn't read it, I'm glad you didn't read the town of Bonneville there.
So we need a motion for correspondence and information, please, gentlemen?
I got it, Mr. Reeve.
All right, thank you councillor Swiger for making the motion on correspondence, that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through eleven before you, any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you, looking for reports from members of council, whoever would like to speak first. Councillor, sorry, go ahead.
I was hoping maybe to make one more motion before we went to reports.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that when you want to do it?
I was just going to do it after, but you can do it now, yeah, go ahead.
May I ask for an in camera session just to iron out a few of the details?
Yeah, sure, after reports.
Okay, thank you.
Because I already got my mic on.
Councillor, sorry, councillor Crick?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
He's not important anymore.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that there is an open house next Tuesday for, at North Star for, now that they're moved in with their admin, they're offering open house to the public, or no, to special invite, so municipalities and their staff, I guess, to come check out the new place, so if you're available next Tuesday, come in for a visit, so that's all I have.
Thank you councillor Crick.
Thank you, all right, I had a minister's fishery advisory council meeting, so just working on kind of trying to open up the reg, fishing regulations there and it's, they're not really public meetings, but kind of just working behind the scenes on that, also had an FCSS board meeting, yeah, just kind of regular business there, then I had the egg service board, egg service board conference last week, I did have a few notes on that one there. Oh yeah, they did, there was a presentation about wild boars, it's kind of a pest, so if anybody sees them, just recall into the MD and report it as quick as you can, there was a presentation on Alberta being rat free, Alberta's typically considered rat free, but they always is rats that are eradicated from the province every year, so there was thirty one rats removed from Alberta in two thousand twenty four and I think most of those were actually from hitchhiker rats that came in on vehicles. And then on Friday last week, attended the RMA Zone Five District Meeting and thank you to, especially to Stephanie and Robin and Matt and anybody else that I'm not aware of that worked on the resolution, helping with that, so I took a resolution there and it was titled, "The Formation of a Federal Lobby Association for Rural Municipalities", and I'll just quickly read through that here so people can kind of hear what it's about a little bit, it says, "Whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, is expected to advocate to the federal government on behalf of and for the needs of all Canadian municipalities, and whereas FCM appears to be very focused on climate action as opposed to advocating for the development of resources, especially oil, gas and coal, and whereas calling for climate action instead of resource development and energy independence is not only harmful to Alberta, but to Canada as a whole, and whereas FCM is continually advocating for policies that are harmful to Alberta and members of the rural municipalities of Alberta, therefore be resolved that RMA will work towards creating a lobby group for rural municipalities across Canada that will include a mandate to actively lobby for the specific needs and values of rural municipalities." I also had in there a clause, that's what passed at the, so that got passed at the zone meeting, it'll go to the RMA in Edmonton in the spring to be, debated at the conference and we had a, first therefore be resolved clause was struck out in an amendment and it stated that therefore be resolved that the RMA sees to be an active member of FCM for all the reasons that were just stated, there was a bit of discussion and Minburne County also had a similar discussion there about the value of being part of FCM and I guess the discussion really evolved around that most rural municipalities can see that FCM is geared towards the bigger cities and the urban centers, not really advocating for rural Alberta's needs or rural, any rural municipalities in Canada for that matter and eighty percent of the membership of FCM is rural, twenty percent is urban, but the, the, kind of the conclusion of the conversation from Minburne County was that, and that was kind of the group came to a consensus there, was that if we're not at FCM, then we have no voice and FCM is going, is speaking on behalf of Canadian municipalities, so even though I don't necessarily like everything they do and how they speak and there was a lot of comments about the conference in Calgary last year, how people thought it was one of the worst conferences they'd been to and a very woke ideology and left-leaning policies that were presented there, so I think this is a step in the right direction anyways, that we're going to work towards forming a, or we'll discuss at the RMA in spring as to whether or not we move forward to forming a rural municipality type lobby group, thanks.
Thank you. Dana, did you do your report already?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay.
No, I didn't, Brad, I didn't have that much to say.
Okay, I don't, we didn't have a lot of happening.
Like, a little bit, like I was, just, I guess the comment about that the MD requested support, a support letter from Laika for the Community Trail Edible Landscape Program Throughout Communities, it's called Throughout, Through Communities Choose Well, so, you know, we just, we got a recent letter from, I'm not sure, Robin or Stephanie or somebody on, sort of updating us on what, I'm not sure who that, but they updated us on what that grant was, so they're going to look to put some kind of vegetation, edible trees, plants or whatever around some of the trails in the MD, so nice, nice project, so, anyway, and that's run by the MD, but looking for a letter of support from Laika, so that was nice to see. And Josh talked about RMA, I'll, I'll just mention kind of two of the sort of neat things that we listened to, Battle River Railway was like a fifty, I think a fifty mile railway that was the spur off CN line, I think, and CN gave it up and, and they formed a committee to buy this railway and so they, they have a cooperative, special cooperative, they said, and they bought the railway and they're actually making money out it and one of the interesting comments, they replaced, I think they said three or four of their wooden trestle bridges with, with culverts and they were concrete box culverts and really interesting to me when I phoned the guy the other day and asked him, he said, they had, they had such a short time period to get these culverts replaced, they did it in five days, so they removed the trestles and put in new culverts in five days, so just something to strive for, I guess, I'd like to see that.
That's hard to believe, almost.
And then there was one other speaker talking about Flagstaff, it was their Flagstaff Crafted story and it was their economic development officer just brought, it was a small initiative to start with, they brought five little companies together and then offered them kind of free advertising and promotions and everything, so now they're up to like eighty one, eighty one different little companies and they've supplied like forty one new jobs in the area, so it was just a nice show that their economic development officer was working hard to keep things going in Flagstaff County and that's it. And that's it, thank you.
Counselor Slipchik, I'll turn your mic on, that would help probably.
Yeah. Okay, all I got is, what the heck did I do? Oh, we had a lodge meeting, and everything's good, they're very low vacancy, pretty well, or they're all filled up, we're doing some renovations on Glendon, at the manor, they have room rooms, but pretty well, there's a need for more rooms that, like, these are filled up, I know a couple years ago during COVID, there was lots of vacancies, but.
Not anymore.
Yeah, not anymore, so, I thought the day's coming where we're gonna probably be needing more rooms for the elderly. And also, LAURA Board Meeting, they're, 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 like, we talked, February seventh, their appreciation night, the entertainer's gonna be Ben Crane, supposed to be good entertainment, cartoonist, and real humor, real humor anyway. And that's, I think that's all I got, so.
Yeah, and for me, most, most of you guys mentioned, I just wanted to mention about the C2 last night again, doing, you know, kind of an eye-opener there, the guy had a lot of, seemed like he know, knows what he's talking about, you know, just a little bit of heads up for us, like, with this thing coming through Glendon there, you know, you can throw in a bunch of money into a project, and then it wasn't what you really needed, and then future councils in the future is gonna be stuck with something, so you really gotta make sure your eyes are dotted and your Ts are crossed, because it creates a lot of problems in the future. So that's, that's about all I have. Thanks. Oh, yep. Donnie brought it to my attention, thank you for bringing that. We had a member in our area, Mr. Dean Thompson from Yellowhead, he had passed away suddenly, I was at a funeral, and I was talking to the guy, and then, like, it just seemed like a couple days later, he had passed away. So he's a big member in our area with Yellowhead Glass, I just want, Donnie wanted me to mention, and so be it, he's a big part of a lot of people in this area, serviced a lot of people in this area, so I'm sorry for his passing away to his family. So, thank you, Donnie, for remembering that. Okay, we need someone to go and motion close session. All right, thank you, Counselor Slipchik. All, all those in favor, we'll do the old way. Carried. Yes, all right, old and new. Carried, again.
Just waiting for the motion on the screen. My computer is gone, shut down. Who would like to make this motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Slipchuck, for making this motion that council approves amending the effective date for appointment of Ben Burlingat as chief administration officer for the municipal district of Bonneville as well as effective date for Ben Burling- how do you say your last name? Burlingat? To act as designated signing officer of the municipality to be Tuesday, January 28, 2024. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Carrie Darcy?
I voted out.
Okay. And then we have an- yeah, that's Carrie. And then we have one more motion?
Adjournment?
No? Or are we doing that? We're not doing that. Okay, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll do that.
All right, Councilor- Deputy Reeve Skarsen adjourns the meeting. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.